Good afternoon, everyone. Oh, these mics work well.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Welcome to our work session today. Happy New Year. This is our work, first work session of the new year. And part of what we're going to be doing today is following through the agenda. This is part of a mid-year checkup. You know, since we, really, over the past several months have walked through quite a few things. We obviously went through our superintendent search process that completed with Dr. Boone being hired. We had our training slash retreat back in the summer. We've reaffirmed our commitment to our strategic plan, mission and goals and beliefs. We also had the opportunity to begin to walk through process for our goals for the year, goals and parameters. We were able to also update and affirm our code of ethics where we combined several documents together. We've worked on a variety of issues that various members have of the board have brought forward and working with the administration to give attention to. Those included looking at our scores for the year in terms of our accreditation scores. As a district, we've had conversations around how we broaden our indicators and make sure that we look at many other indicators of success. We've been able to do some initial delving into new policies, including carrying over from last school year, the unprovoked assault on staff. We had a good work session discussion around the tribunal process just last month. We've also, as you know, been talking about the equity policy, which we will address and provide plenty of time today for input. So we decided to move our work session up to 2:00 today, provide more time really to use this as a mid-year update. And just as a reminder, I mean, these are work sessions. We know that, you know, as we worked over the last few years, we restructured our work sessions to really give the board and the superintendent time to do just that, for us to work. You know, on a rare occasion, we may take a vote, but typically, we know it's our process that that's not what we do at work sessions. This is where the sausage continues to get made. It gets made as we are board meeting in the public. And so that's what we'll do today. We'll continue to work hard together, build consensus around our direction, our results and our actions. We have the opportunity to hear from Dr. Boone as she's able to describe some of the things that she's seen over the next, over her first 30 days and some thoughts that she'll share with us about direction, probably over the next 90 to 100 days. Also, once we finish up today, we will travel to Charlottesville later on in the week for our training with the VSBA and NSBAQ, where we will continue to do our work as a team around our own professional development. We know that we have our goal of being a board of distinction. We'll continue to work in that regard. And one of the things we know in doing that, that there's a lot of training and professional development that we go through as a board and that we get exposed to, that, you know, others may not get the opportunity to do, just general members of the public. But it's a good opportunity for us to continue to update ourselves in our work and get the opportunity to just continue to work together as a governance team, all focused around what's in the best interest of our children and making sure we have successful outcomes. So with that, I didn't want to go too much into the professional development section on the work session. That is an area that we agreed to put there to just give us an opportunity as a board to continue to work on and hone those things that we learn and discuss, whether it's through our trainings with the VSBA or through the various professional developments and workshops that we attend. I will remind everyone, you know, as we go through the meeting today, if you get an opportunity to pull up your code of ethics, it's on Board Docs. You know, we did establish the, we established and we adopted the eight characteristics of an effective school board. And so as we work today, I think it's good for us to have those things in mind. As part of that work, Dr. Gabriel and Mrs. Doyle worked on that draft and they included in there, you know, peak performing governance teams from Tim Quinn. We've also continued to talk about the policy governance model by John Carver. I had the opportunity to speak briefly with Dr. Boone right before the new year and just bringing her up to speed on those models that we've looked at. And I've asked her to reach out to her network so as part of these work sessions for the Board of Distinction Professional Development, that maybe we can have some others who can come in and work with us in that regard, just as in years past. We had the Panasonic Foundation that worked with the district on a variety of things in addition to the training that we've done. But I just wanted to open up if there's anything that any board members would like to talk about or bring up or have us give any additional thought to in the area of Board of Distinction Professional Development. We do know we have the document with VDOE, the MOU, that we adopted with the points there that we've been following, making sure that we address. But if there's anything else, whether it's today or moving forward for the rest of the year, that any board members would like to discuss or bring forward in the area of our own professional development, I'll just open the floor for that if there's anyone that has any comments or thoughts. All right, with that, we will continue on with our agenda then. And next on the agenda would be a superintendent report from Dr. Boone. So, Dr. Boone, floor is yours.
Thank you, and good afternoon, everyone. It's just posted to Board Docs is the superintendent's report. And first, I want to thank everyone who has been a part of the first 30 days. It seemed a lot longer than 30 days. I mean, I know December has 31, but we, you know. It really does seem a lot longer than that period of time in terms of connecting. And I certainly want to thank members of the executive cabinet and members of the full cabinet and the principals, the teacher associations, all of those folks and the community members who have engaged in conversations with me through, since December 1st and a couple of days that I had in transition here in the district and I met with some of the district leaders. And it gave me a chance to really connect with the district and understand where we are and what are the things we need to be paying attention to. I know for some, there may be an expectation that this is, woo, I'm going to sell, I'm going to save the world. That's not how I lead. And so what you're going to hear is exactly how I'll be leading, closer to the work, being very practical in terms of what's working well and where do we need to go. Not making any major announcements today. You will continue to see the work emerge through the next several months as we do budget and other things, as I'll talk about in the document. But this really is about what have, what have the first 30 days been like for me and what do I project the next 100 days to be the focus and what we intend to accomplish? So, the first 30 days in the district for me have really been about listening, learning and connecting with MPS in the center. What's going on in the district? Who's in the district? Who's supporting the district, external to the district? You know, what do we know about what's happening in the district to make those connections for going forward? And so that's what we've been doing for the first 30 days, is listening, learning and connecting. How we've been able to accomplish that? They still didn't quite make it large enough. We made an adjustment, but still a little bit better. Held one-on-one meetings with school board members because outside of the formal interview process and public meetings, had not had a chance to really sit down and talk with any board member. So we've been able to accomplish that in the first 30 days. Certainly, met with central administration and cabinet members. We've continued our weekly meetings with cabinet principals and assistant principals. Very fortunate in my first week here that it was already professional development scheduled and I had a chance to spend a couple of days with principals, assistant principals and school leadership team members. That was very beneficial. Started my meetings with the teacher association representatives, city officials, including the mayor and the city manager, parents. Had a number of different occasions to be engaged with parents, both at the meeting and greet at Granby High School in December, at the executive committee meeting for the Norfolk Council of PTAs and one-on-one conversations I've had with parents, either those who contacted my office or those I have met at various events. Had great conversations with parents at Lake Taylor High School last month when we held the open house for the specialty programs and programs. Have started conversations with legislative delegation members, including initially Senator Alexander. Conversations with the Virginia Department of Education, including the state superintendent and the director of the Office of School Improvement. So, and community organizations. I think I reported last month that I was able to spend nearly a full day with United for Children group, who has been very supportive in helping us think about the wraparound services and what's needed for our students outside of the core academics and ways that they can support the core academics. So I spent nearly a day with that group as well as other business leaders. I've been able to attend a Greater Norfolk Corporation meeting and will continue to work with them. So outside of meeting wonderful people, what's been the significance in these conversations? What have I been trying to listen for, to learn about beyond the connections? And so what's very, very key in this work is that, you know, particularly with inside the district, and I tailor the questions depending upon the audience, but there were three key questions that I have been using as a frame for these introductory conversations and understanding where we are as a district. So I would ask folks from their perspective, whether they were community members or whether they're within the district, even the one-on-one conversations with the board, has been about what's working well in MPS? What are the most pressing issues that we face? And what are the top three to five challenges that we need to focus on as we enter the second semester? As I talk in the next few slides about some of my discoveries, please be clear, these are emerging themes. None of these lists are designed to be all-inclusive or fully exhaustive because we're only talking about the first 30 days and where we are with the work. But there are certainly some emerging themes that are coming through in these conversations. In what's working well, it's very clear that we have dedicated and committed teachers, principals, administrators who are truly focused on growing, on improving and being successful and our schools and students being successful. One of the things that I've learned is working very well is the beginning and early and improving collaboration among and between departments in the district and the schools. So central office in schools and among and between departments. And that's a critical piece of work as we talk a little bit later where we're headed beyond that. The relationships with supportive community organizations and partnerships that enhance our school operations and provide additional support for teachers and students can't be understated, can't be overstated. I mean, it is very clear that we have some supportive community organizations and they are definitely committed to the improvement of Norfolk Public Schools. And there's an overall attitude of a willingness to fight mediocrity, that no one is satisfied with where we are as a district and they're very willing to say, let's do what we need to do. Let's be led to that direction and let's put voice to it so it can happen. The second question that I ask through these conversations of what are the most pressing issues in the district? Again, and primarily for the media sake, but for everyone in general, this list is not all-inclusive nor is it fully exhaustive. These are in this first period of time, this first month, are some emerging themes. So recruiting and retaining great teachers, principals and administration, it's something that I heard consistently across the board, both from internal stakeholders as well as external stakeholders and partners. Obviously, improving student achievement and school success is something that is our focus and what we need to pay a great deal of attention to. Addressing literacy and reading skills pre-K through 12, again, was something we've heard across the board, both within the district and external to the district, that we really do have challenges as it relates to literacy and reading and how do we begin to address those? Combating poor public perception of the district and the schools is certainly a pressing issue in the district. Aligning curriculum, professional learning, assessments, supports and resources. How are we focused? The question is, are we focused in a way that everybody knows what we're trying to accomplish and why, and the methods and the means by which we will do that? Another pressing issue is filling key administrative positions that are currently vacant and how do we move through that process in a meaningful way? And meaningful in that, and I again, express appreciation to members of the cabinet who recognize how significant these positions are, but have been patient with me as we think through the process to make sure that we have the right people filling those vacancies and leading the work forward. And another emerging theme is improving climate, culture and morale. That's been well documented. The board has had reports. We've heard those things and so that's a significant concern in the district. As for the top three to five challenges that we should face or consider as we enter the second semester, and you may wonder why, but I think it's very obvious. As I come in and came in on December 1st, I'm essentially coming in at the second semester. So it's not like a July entrance. And, you know, how we get ready for opening the school year and all of that, we're in the midst of a school year, so what do we need to pay attention to? Heard it, again, a very clear message around keeping students at the center of our work. The need to focus on and make sure we have rigor in all of our instruction across the board that, you know, the lessons are really delivering in a way, are designed and delivered in a way that students are building upon knowledge for the next level of education, the next grade level, the next courses in sequences. An elephant in the room, if you will, is our lesson plan process. And heard that loudly and clearly. And it's one of those things that as I've learned that when we've had academic reviews from the state that help us think about our school turnaround, lesson planning was an area cited for attention. Our response to that has created a very cumbersome lesson planning format and so we have to give that some attention. But again, this is an emerging theme. Retaining effective teachers, principals and administrators. And you've seen this before. And it's both an issue of concern in the district as well as something we need to think about as we get into the second semester, which is generally recruitment time by districts or when employees begin to make decisions as to whether or not they're going to stay with us. So what do we do to address that? Creating stability within the district by minimizing drastic changes and new initiatives. Being very sensitive to the amount of transition and change that has occurred over the last six and a half years or seven years and coming in the middle of the year. The worst thing that I could have done to this district is come in and say, and pretend that everything was broken, pull the rug out and say, now we're going to start everything afresh. Everything is not broken. We need to do some alignment, some focus. And how then do we focus on those things that are making a difference and can make a difference in instruction and student improvement and continue to focus on those through the rest of the school year? Obviously, if there are some practices that I run across and my team and I run across that we need to make some adjustments immediately, certainly we would do that. We, you know, how do we take some things off the plates? What are some things that we need to accomplish and focus on? And so that's a piece that I've heard over and over again, both within the district and external to the district. A final emerging theme that I've been citing today is telling the MPS story beyond the persistently negative headlines. There is a much deeper and much richer story than the headlines that tend to dominate the airwaves and the print media. And so that's something that's very clear and concerning to all of our employees and to the community as supportive of the public schools. How do we tell our story beyond those headlines? So obviously, then, what do we do then in the next 100 days? In this work, listening, learning and connecting will always be a significant part of what's going on. So it wasn't just for the first 30 days, it's for the next 100, it's for the next three years, it's for the time going forward. Because we only know how successful we are if we are continuing to check in with our stakeholders, with our constituents, to see what's really making a difference. So listening, learning and connecting will continue. And I'll talk in a few minutes about some aspects, some places where I've not engaged in conversations yet, and I want to do that both within the district and external to the district. You will also begin us, begin seeing us doing some alignment work and our practices, our policies, our actions, our resources. And finally, in these next 100 days, we will begin to create systems for effectiveness. And I'll talk a little bit more about that. But as you recall, in the initial diagram with the listening, learning and connecting, it said MPS in the center. Now, in the next 100 days, we begin the MPS redesign. What is it that we need to focus on to get the results that we need to happen and to ensure that we're an effective, highly effective operational entity and that we're doing work in a way that we can get the results that we know our children are capable of, our teachers are able to produce, our administrators are able to support, and then our schools are successful? And so we are now entering our phase of redesign going forward. In the next 100 days, in the listening, learning and connecting work, obviously, I've got to get more face time with teachers. I've seen teachers as I've visited schools and it didn't have that on the earlier slide, but I have been, even with the winter break, I was able to get into a few schools. And so the idea of spending more face time with teachers to understand their thinking and their information is a critical piece. Also, more face time with students. One of the things, and I mentioned the other day in cabinet, that I will be working toward is re-establishing a superintendent student advisory council. Hopefully, can get that to occur during the school year. That's a goal that I have for myself, but certainly a way in which we engage the student voice around this work. Continuing to meet and work with and talk with parents across the city is critically important. I will be in the process of scheduling one-on-one meetings with city council because I think it's important for them to know from me how I intend to lead the district, what my philosophy is around improvement and the relationships between the schools and the city and the city council. So we'll begin that work. City department heads, city manager Marcus Jones and I have had a couple of very great conversations and he has connected me with key departments that have an interface and an interaction with the relationship with the Norfolk Public Schools. So I will be scheduling those. Meeting more of the legislative delegation. I've met some folks individually, but having sit-down conversations with them, including if it means going to Richmond because we do have a long session about to begin. Higher education, I was very appreciative of a couple of college representatives who came to the swearing in. I was able to spend in that day with United for Children, a big portion of the day, including the dean of the School of Education at Old Dominion. I've had some face time and connecting and meeting of educational personnel and presidents in the other colleges across the city and the region. And so I'm looking forward to having more sit-down and face-to-face opportunities with higher ed. Obviously, United for Children gave me a chance to meet city departments and many leaders of community organizations, but I also have now started scheduling some follow-up conversations with those organizations and with those who are not a part of the United for Children work and what that looks like. Can't live in Norfolk and lead in Norfolk if you don't have a relationship with the military and what that looks like. So I will be having outreach to the military. Again, you know, Norfolk carries a strong rating for military in terms of being stationed here for certain educational opportunities and I want to make sure that we forge that relationship in a strong manner. Will obviously continue the conversations with business through Greater Norfolk Corporation. Again, just like United for Children and some of those other entities, you have an opportunity to see a lot of people. And now through those meetings and connections, I'm scheduling those one-on-one conversations and meetings with entities. The secretary of education in the Virginia Department of Education are, will be ongoing conversations around the work and you'll see some strategic goals that I've set for this, through the end of this school year, near the latter portion of this report and is critically linked to the work of the secretary of ed and the Department of Ed and the faith community. One of the places we can reach so many parents is through the faith community. And so having the relationship with the faith community and interfacing, interacting with them is a great way for us to get our story told and messages out and to listen to what their impressions are and thoughts are for the schools. The next 100 days in terms of timing of coming in, starting in December, is that the budget process was underway and now we've turned the corner into really beginning to develop what our budget will look like. Later during this work session, Dr. Thornton will be giving you the budget projections, early projections based on the governor's release budget. And as I said, at the public hearing for the budget, very specific information that will be coming forward. But we've discussed how we intend to do certain things and I'm looking forward to presenting to the board a budget that reflects the district alignment that I've talked about that we're starting in these 100 days. And the investments that I will be recommending to you as a board that we make in terms of supporting teaching, learning, student supports and school safety as a first pass. Obviously, all of district operations, but an intentional set of recommendations and investments in that area for our work because when we put the child at the center of what we're doing, then everything else aligns around the child, not around the adult. Will, through that budget document, also be introducing central office reorganization that again, is aligned to the district needs and fosters some coherence, some cohesion and connection throughout MPS. One of my discoveries is that we have a lot of good things that are going on, but they aren't necessarily connected in a manner which we get the greatest leverage from those resources going forward. So bringing departments together in the shared conversations and the types of conversations we have in terms of where everybody has a role to play in the success of the schools and in improving student achievement, that's what we're beginning. So I will be introducing some reorganization in central office through the budgeting process next month. Filling the critical central office vacancies is important, but filling that, those vacancies by matching knowledge, skills, experience and talent with the needs of the district and with philosophy that we have of supporting schools for success. So it's not just about a warm body in these positions. And again, I have to say thank you to the senior leaders who have been patient with me through this process as we make sure we get the right people in the right seat on the bus. Obviously, we're preparing to open two schools, Richard Bowlin and Broad Creek and Campustella Elementary Schools and finalizing all of the plans for successful openings of those schools in this, later this summer. And that will be a critical part of what we are focusing on and accomplishing in the next 100 days. Reviewing and assessing our internal systems. When I talk about departments having a lot of great things going on in departments, how are we then operating and functioning as a system? We have to make that intentional. And that's what we have to see. How are we doing business? What are our organizational practices that will lead to effectiveness? And what are the practices that we may need to let go of that don't enhance effectiveness? And that's And that's what we'll be spending the next hundred or so days and ongoing. That's just like the listening, learning and connecting. We will constantly be reviewing and revising and, and, and paying attention to how we do business in order to be effective. Success won't come to this district unless we're an effective organization. So, we have to pair our business thinking with our instructional leadership to make sure then that we have the effectiveness that we need to be successful. With all of what I've learned in the first thirty days and all of what I say we need to focus on as we begin to turn the corner toward the end of this school year, because we're really, you know, once you get to second semester, you're looking toward graduation and closing out a school year. There, there are a few strategic goals that I've set that I need to, to accomplish and want to talk with the board about. One is making sure all of those critical central office positions are filled before the close of this school year. And that those folks are hopefully on board as we begin our, around February, March, start thinking about summer school, summer programs, all of those things that you don't plan when school ends, but we're in planning for now, so that we can have those key positions there. And hopefully, HR again, as we think about how do we recruit and retain our best so, of going forward. Need to engage key stakeholders from teachers, principals, central office, higher ed, and, and everyone and others in the development of a district-wide literacy focus. As I indicated, something that we've heard, I've heard over and over again in the, in this short month, is that we, we have, truly have some literacy and reading challenges. And Dr. Rogers has already started some work in, in this area, and we're going to really push hard in the second semester to get some things moving in terms of developing a district-wide leadership focus that we can work with our schools and they can be a voice in, in helping to develop and then can embrace it as we begin implementation of actions related to that. Working with the Virginia Department of Education to design an effective set of turnaround practices for the district's priority and focused schools. I'm certainly hoping to, to leverage what have been my practices and effective practices in school turnaround with expectations that the Department of Ed has for turnaround, along with the changes now from what formerly was the No Child Left Behind Act, with the revision now to ESSA, I guess we said ESSA, I don't know. You know, we like to put initials together and then give them a cute little saying. But the elementary, All Children Self Succeed Act that was recently signed. And so, I'm hoping to, to be able to put that together and work with the department so that we can not just have actions that are related to compliance that will not lead to school improvement and school turnaround, but where we have actions that are clearly linked to what can create success in our schools and have our, our teachers, our teacher leaders, our teachers, our principals and, and other leaders understanding very clearly that the work we're doing will make a difference in how we can validate that. Much of what we have in place currently is more about a compliance list. Compliance is certainly an aspect of, of improvement and turnaround, but it doesn't reflect everything that has to happen with turnaround. So I want to work, I will be working very closely with the State Department to, to accomplish that, as well as reviewing the practices that we currently have in place through the academic reviews and all of the information that the state has brought forward to us and how we think about it and, and how we implement that. And another strategic goal is to focus on the whole child as we develop policies and procedures. You know, we talk a lot about what students and families need, but we have to be intentional about how we wrap services around students and families in order to close those other gaps that exist as, as impediments to, to student achievement and, and successful connection with our schools. Had a chance, opportunity yesterday to attend the IB certificate, uh, graduation and awards program yesterday at Granby. And we, we know very clearly that our students are achieving well and can achieve well. How do we make sure that that's the expectation across the district? And not just having pockets of excellence, but having excellence across the district. So, Mr. Jordan, members of the board, that concludes my thirty-day whirlwind tour. And where I think we're headed for the next hundred days and into the end of the semester. And I certainly welcome any questions or, and discussion.
But in the, in the opening, the four for questions, there are a couple of areas that I'd like to know if you could touch on before we get into Q and A back and forth. And that would include-
Any, any review and assessment that you've done of the high-level strategic plan, the mission, beliefs and parameters in that regard. And then also, I mentioned earlier that part of what we worked on a couple of months back was revisiting and taking a look at the comprehensive accountability system. And I know that you had shared that in your former district, that you have continued what we used to do in Norfolk and it also enhanced it some with the work that you did in Worcester. Can you also speak to that? And then after that, I'll just open, open the floor up.
So it's, thank you. As it relates to the-
Yeah, you can hold it down.
As it, as it relates to the mission and vision and beliefs of the district, I mean, certainly, I have, have read those as part of the application and interview process. And I have also read those, reviewed those now that I've started. And certainly, the mission, the belief, our cornerstone, is a cornerstone of a richly diverse community. And those beliefs and things certainly mirror mine. And so, I'm fully committed to those and, and don't see a need to make any drastic adjustments as that relates, as it relates to it, to those. What you have not heard, though, in this entry plan is the undertaking a strategic, strategic planning process. I think we're at a place where we pretty much know what our needs are. They're well documented over time through a variety, including the strategic planning process that was done previously, the various state reports, as well as other reports that the district has commissioned and reported on. It's now time for us to do some strategic action. And so, I'm more focused on how do we get at the action rather than how do we get at a plan. Certainly, doesn't mean that anything goes and there's, you know, there's no rhyme or reason, no template. What I presented to you today is that rhyme and reason and that template for how we do business. As it relates to the comprehensive accountability system, part of my discussions with the Department of Education will center on how do we demonstrate planning for school improvement? Because again, if they told us, if they tell us we have to plan for school improvement, but there's not necessarily a specific template that we have to follow, then I'm certainly more interested in accountability for the work across some critical indicators rather than just having a document that again becomes a compliance document. As we know from when Norfolk had a, a comprehensive accountability system and the one that I developed and, and utilized in Worcester, it's a living, breathing document that allows us to look at what it is that we said we would do. How do we review and make sense of whether or not we are doing things? What does the progress look like? And how do we make mid-course adjustments with that? Traditional school improvement or strategic plans say you keep going the course, whether you're getting the results or not. And so, that's, that accountability system work is part of what I am thinking about as I talk about effective turnaround practices. Let's be honest, our entire district will be under redesign along with our schools because we have so many schools that, that have not met expected benchmarks. And even for those who have, there's still room for improvement. So we are engaging in district-wide redesign.
All right. Anyone, questions, comments, thoughts, discussion? Dr. Gabriel?
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Boone, for the presentation. With regards to the slide stating first thirty days, emerging themes, the very last point, improving climate, culture and morale. One of the things that the district does have is a climate survey.
Yes.
It is anonymous. It can drill down to school level data. One of the things that I personally have thought that it would be important to include on the climate survey are questions pertaining to recent changes within the division. So for example, we recently, in the last year or two, began pairing schools K-1, 2, and then grades three through five. How do students, teachers and staff members feel that that is working? How can they give feedback in an anonymous way? We recently have opened the Academy of Discovery. How do parents feel, students and teachers feel that that is going? So anytime that we're bringing in a new topic for teachers to work on, administrators to get professional development on, how are we getting feedback in a very broad sense from them in a, in an anonymous and easy way? That's one point of interest that I think would be important to mention. And with regards to the strategic goals and the literacy campaign, I think that that is critical. That's something that Dr. Thornton had mentioned earlier when he was helping us through transition. And when you mentioned in here to engage our stakeholders, our teachers, our principals and outside community figures, if we can build upon what we're doing in the school system to what we're doing outside of the school system, so our libraries, our recreation centers, all of our community partners, if we can strengthen city relationships to make sure that we are all working on the same page. And if we have a literacy program that we're developing and for example, a computer program that we're working on or books that we're working on, make sure that those counterparts know what we're working on so they can reinforce it. Because a lot of our students may not necessarily go home to a two-parent household where reading and everything takes place directly after school. Sometimes they're going to the recreation center, they're going to a grandparents' house or a church. And we need to make sure that they're on board with what our plan is.
Thank you for, for those, those comments because again, we need the support for literacy. We have to make sure we have how we're teaching reading and what we're doing to support literacy. And that's one of those areas right now that we're lacking some coherence.
Dr. Boone, thanks for the presentation again. What, you mentioned in your presentation about the supportive community organizations. Can you elaborate on what you mean by supportive? And then how do we still, what are your thoughts on how we engage community organizations that don't appear to be supportive at the moment? But, but organizations that we still need to understand our mission and to rally around our district?
We have a number of longstanding partners, both with the district and with individual schools. Some of the greatest and strongest partnerships are those that are between an organization, whether it's a church or a community group directly with a school. And they build and establish those relationships over time for success. And so, those, those are some of those, those entities that still exist. We certainly get support through the Norfolk Education Foundation, those entities that are saying, hey, we want to be part of raising funds for the things above and beyond the operational budget. What are the other things that we want to, you want to accomplish in the district? That's a piece, United Way. I mean, if I start naming, I'm gonna miss somebody. But those are groups that have been around for a long time and have never stepped away or strayed away from supporting children in schools to therefore make sure we have a strong public education system for this community. In terms of those who aren't at the table, that's part of my work and how we begin to do that. We need to be able to talk about exactly what gaps we're trying to fill. We often have people who come to us and say, I want to help, tell me what we can do. And we sometimes, and I say the collective we in education, sometimes flounder because we really haven't given thought about what we need. Through this process of school improvement and identifying what's, what are our global needs that we have as a community for our schools? And then what are the things that are unique and, and unique needs at a school? Then we can say to someone, we really could use X because we have data to show that we have some challenges around certain things. And so, if you could help us with that, and that's something that, that is a direct link to your mission, that would be the type of helpful thing. So, we have to really map out our current assets and our current needs as it relates to partnerships. And then we can, can tell the story of, of what could accomplish. You know, one of the things when the district had a comprehensive accountability system, one of the, the critical indicator areas dealt with engagement of parents and businesses and the community in the schools. So, schools were able to say, we need, and we have parents that are helping or businesses to help us focus on this particular need in our school. And so, over time, you could begin to map what those supports look like and begin to see if there are positive results coming from those linkages. So that's exactly what we need to do. But we need to be able, I mean, I, any number of people, everywhere I've gone, hey, you know, anything I can do to help the schools, let me know. So I need to be able to have the quick pocket version of let me know.
Yeah. I had another quick question. So, connected to our climate survey and morale in our district, not only among our teachers and staff, but students and families as well, is the testing culture. What are your thoughts? I know, you know, it's just been thirty, thirty-plus days, but in your next several months and what, how, testing is a reality and that's understood right now. But setting a culture that is not focused on testing, but on teaching and learning is of, I think, critical importance here in our district. How, what is your approach going to be to kind of, you know, set that culture, set the tone for?
My first conversation with the, with the principals was to say to them, you all, those who have been here before, no, I never talk about test scores. We don't drive the work around test scores. Yes, we do talk about them and the expectations. But the way in which we get at that, if we focus on a strong written curriculum that's well-aligned to the standards and authentic lesson development that is supported with resources and external pieces where the teacher delivers the lesson and has appropriate resources and supports to, to supplement that, if we do that well, the test scores will happen. If we focus on test scores, we can get those too. But we will not have prepared students for the next level of their education. We have to focus on the teaching and learning. And that's why when, when you look in these next hundred days, I talk about the alignment piece. We certainly know that the, there has been alignment work that's been done with the curriculum. And Dr. Rogers and, and others are beginning to work to say, how are we making sure that our professional learning, our professional development is aligned with that work in a way? That's why it becomes important then, what we recommend as investments through the budget will be those things that will create that additional alignment where we're talking teaching and learning. As I said to the principals, a reality will be our report card on, on test scores and everything else. That's, that's something we have to live with. But what do we want to accomplish? The quick fix and get the scores? And then graduates who can't reach the level of success, they, they should be able to, having gone through our schools. Do we want to make sure that we're creating the sound educational background for these students to be successful going forward? And so, that's why the, the focus on reading. Because there are a lot of things you could do to, to, to do support for passing the SOL test in reading, but doesn't mean a child can read. And so, that's the difference in the culture that I'm beginning to discuss in the district with the principals and how we do business.
Ray Wood?
Dr. Boone? It's Mike.
I'll share.
Turn it red, don't touch.
So should we expect action plans around the strategic goals that you have, that you have set, in particular around the school improvement of our challenged schools? Should we be expecting action plans that we can see the progress in those strategic plans?
We will be mapping out. There are so many conversations and discussions before we get to the actual plans that I'll be presenting. But absolutely, you will, I will be reporting to the board, just as we have worked with schools and everyone in the district, to show how we intend to perform and function in a way that we get at those goals. And we will begin to more closely quantify. You know, someone asked me, well, will you be talking today about the percentage of the number of schools that would meet state accreditation? Absolutely not. First of all, I don't play gimmicks and games with our kids' lives. And second of all, I don't have a crystal ball to say what it will say, what that will be about. And coming mid-year, you know, work has already started. It didn't wait for me to start. The school year didn't start December 1st, it started in September. And so how do we support that work in a way that we can get the best results for this year as we build the stage and the entry, if you will, for what it will look like going forward? So we are both building and supporting at the same time through the second semester. But absolutely, what you will be hearing coming back around those goals is what we're gonna do to look like, what it will look like. And I will be talking with you. Currently, you know what those MOUs look like with the state for the priority schools. I'll be coming back to the board to say, these are the agreements that I've been able to negotiate with the state as it relates to school turnaround. This is how we'll be approaching it, and this is how we'll measure our progress.
Thank you.
So Dr. Boone, thank you very much for your presentation. I thought it was very comprehensive. And you've clearly been very busy for the first thirty days. And I'm thankful that you've been out in the community as much as you have, to meet with as many people, to get the perspective, and hear it firsthand versus perhaps what you've been hearing, you know, secondhand, thirdhand, or even through us. So it's good to get that firsthand knowledge so that you can make your assessment versus others making it for you. So there are three things that I'd like to ask about. And one is around this year's goals and performance measures. So in July and in October, we as a board came up with five or six major categories at which we were gonna put together goals and performance measurements associated with that. And I think, Mr. Chairman, we were gonna discuss some of those, I think, today, or have those be a part of our discussion with Dr. Boone today. So that's one thing. And I can articulate those five or six. The second is regarding our educational planning and our work with DeJean Richter, Tracy Richter, and our work with where we are with our alignment of our schools, to our facilities, to our programming, and what are we doing, not this year, but three to five years out, and ten years to come. And that involves, takes me to my third, which gets to the budget. And I know we're gonna have a conversation later, led by Dr. Thornton, about what the biennium looks like, what we can expect, et cetera. But I think we need to look at the educational plan. We've done good work with Tracy Richter over the years. He knows our division and our community well. And what is your assessment of how we're gonna continue that work and not have there a pause, be a pause or a gap in that?
Let me start with the educational planning work. One of the entities, I've read, have had a chance to get a copy of the report and have skimmed it and see the essence of the report. My next step is to have a conversation with the Richter group so that I can understand their thinking and the mindset. I need to have that conversation with them so I can come back to the board to see if I recommend or suggest any adjustments to the plan as it has been developed. There's a lot of great work that's gone into that plan, and a lot of great work that has been started through that plan. But I need to look at it very clearly in terms of where our academic needs are and what that will begin to look like. You know, one concern that I do have is that we've made, as a district, a lot of structural changes. And in making those structural changes, did we pair the necessary instructional behaviors and improvements to go along with those structural changes? And I think it was Dr. Gabriel who mentioned, you know, how do we know that the things we've done have made a difference, such as the pairing of schools and some of those things? And those are the critical conversations I need to have with the Richter, DeJean Richter group, to better understand their philosophy and their thinking, and what I may see as emerging success or lack of success in some of those entities. And so I look forward to that conversation with the board going forward. There's some really great pieces in there, there's some pieces that I have questions about. And so, you know, how we go with that. This year's goals and metrics, I kind of bumped those to the next work session, simply because I need to talk about the entry plan. Those goals and objectives, those were, those key metrics are about some of the other pieces of the work that we're trying to affect long-term. And so today, I wanted to be able to talk about what my learning had been, what my understanding is, and to be able to map where we go forward. So push that to the work session for the twentieth, in terms, some of that.
The workshop.
The workshop, excuse me. The workshop for the twentieth, as it relates to the goals and the metrics that the board has worked on in July and October.
Okay. And then how is it related to our budgeting? I think we were gonna, maybe we'll have this later, but a kind of a robust discussion here amongst ourselves regarding what we want to see in next year's budget. And you clearly are identifying some things that you know we need to focus on. We as a board have interests that we'd like to see in the budget as well. And that also involves our facilities and our CIP. So educational planning just wasn't about, you know, pairing schools or talking about Willoughby and Ocean Air. It was, are we utilizing our assets, i.e. buildings and/or other assets, to their maximum capability or not? And if not, what should we be doing differently?
Exactly.
What should we be doing with alternative education, et cetera, et cetera? So that's where, to me, educational planning is more than just the quote-unquote Tracy Richter, DeJean Richter work, as much as what are we gonna do with some of the schools that have desperate facility needs?
I agree. You know, we had groundbreaking today for Larchmont. Obviously, our facility needs outweigh our pocketbook at this point. And so how do we deal with that strategically? But we also need to keep in perspective, and the CIP budget will also be a presentation at the next board meeting, the update on that. But what I will be talking about in this initial is more around our operational budget. And what, that portion of the budget that does address facilities, but will be focused on, as I said, the operational aspect of the budget. How do we get some synergy, some things moving as it relates to instruction and that work? The educational planning process, every time you have a player change on the team, and I'm the new player on the team, becomes a time that we revisit the assumptions that were used in the development of those reports. And that's what I need to come back to the board with, to understand both Richter's assumptions, the board's assumptions, and where I see that in terms of alignment with the work. And so it's both, the operational piece in terms of what we need to do instructionally is exactly what you will see in the operating budget. Not getting at the point that I want it to be for this first year, both for limited resources as well as time, with my, the time that I entered the district. We will, you know, shortly after we present this budget to the board, we'll start on the next couple of years' budget because of having a biennial budget cycle, and we'll know by then what the legislature has done with funding for that second year. Then we can move into this whole planning process and our thinking around, what are we doing? You know, part of, not as preempting the budget conversation today, but, you know, how am I going to reprogram some dollars to accomplish certain things in this budget? Because it's in there today, doesn't mean it's gonna be in there tomorrow.
Right. So if I could just follow up on two quick things, and that is regarding facilities again. And I understand clearly what you said about our needs outweigh our funding mechanisms or opportunities. But I still doesn't, I still don't think that precludes us from needing to look at our needs.
Absolutely.
So that we can put dollar figures associated with it and plan on how we're gonna tackle those over the years, because we'll never achieve it all in one year anyway. So I just would say, I think we still need to tackle that because our facilities are in desperate need.
I agree. And so that will be the conversation with the CIP discussion.
Okay, good.
And then the operating budget will be about what it takes to get what we need to do and keep our buildings functioning.
Good.
And our staff supporting.
And the other thing I would recommend is, let's not suggest that you're working only in the budget we have today. If we have additional needs now that you think we require the funding for, then let's go find the funding for it to get what you need to have accomplished.
Oh, absolutely.
So let's not be limited by our, you know, operating budget.
I'm not limited.
And please don't feel like you're caught by that.
No, let me be clear. I don't feel at all that I'm limited by those dollars. But I also recognize, when I wear my CEO hat of the school district, there are limitations in resources. And before I can go with my hands out, I've gotta be able to talk about what we have and how we're using it.
Sure, absolutely.
And so I need to be able to tell a story and not just beg.
Yes.
I need to be able to create the compelling picture behind why we need what we need and what we've done to accomplish what we're trying to accomplish through the budget. But believe me, I will ask.
Good. Thank you.
Dr. Robinson.
I would encourage you to take a close look at our alternative education program. It's been identified over the years as being inadequate for the needs of our children, which ties into the facilities where it's located. And I'll just leave it at that right now.
Sure. Well, we have plenty of time, so, Ms. Wagner?
Again, as we all have said, thank you for a most comprehensive of a report on the first thirty days. I applaud your energy. Just have two things that, and I certainly agree with many of the comments that my colleagues have made. Question on, we talked about two facilities, Richard Bowling and Camp Estella. And we've tossed around identifying programs for each school. Concerned about IB and Richard Bowling, we were saying it's IB. Have we, are we being inclusive in the budget in terms of putting the financial needs into making sure that that school is going to become the IB school in terms of training for the principal and the application of the school? Are we still gonna go there? What's going on with that?
Great question and source of a few conversations in those first thirty days. The commitment, as I understand, I've been looking for documents to say that, but I think it was a verbal commitment around the issues related to IB as a program focus for Richard Bowling. Certainly, that's something that I'm still considering and pushing for. The process for IB, however, is not just because we say we declare it. There has to be investment and commitment from the faculty at the school, from the principal and all. And the IB organization has to see that as an effort. And so in terms of, there are a lot of layers that are going on right now of Richard Bowling, the new facility, the new principal, a focused school that's underperforming. And so we're going to be looking at, how do we begin the conversation around the development of the IB curricular focus going forward? But those internal conversations have to happen. And because of the new building and whatever the enrollment becomes, the full faculty is not there yet. So we can't go to IB and say, oh, yeah, the faculty is committed, when we could have growth of faculty, shifting of faculty, and then we wouldn't be true to that piece. But we will continue those conversations and moving in that direction. But there are a lot of pieces and a lot of conversations that we need to have internally, as well as my team and I need to have with the IB organization as we think about IB as a program focus. But we're still in that planning mode.
So in terms of Camp Estella and STEM, what are we looking like in terms of that? Because we have identified it as the STEM school, are we?
Camp Estella was a little bit further ahead in the curriculum and program planning than Richard Bowling was, because one, STEM had been off and on focus at Camp Estella for a number of years. The curriculum work that, and because STEM is so closely connected to how we're doing business, it was a very different transition than what would happen with the pre, early years IB. So the curriculum work has been identified. And now we're meeting next week to talk about what's the mapping out of professional development and some of that work that will go along with the curriculum focus for Camp Estella. Again, a challenge in the fact that the school faculty is in two locations. And so how do we begin to make sure everybody is having what they need as we think about going forward? But the curriculum work program has been identified, and I'm very pleased with, it's the elementary version, the Project Lead the Way work around STEM. So I was very pleased of that selection by the district and stand ready to support its implementation. I think it's the right place to be. And what the Project Lead the Way work, and I know I'm not calling it the right term, I'm talking about the overall, that is okay, the Project Lead the Way work, the overarching umbrella of it, is the fact that it is well-defined, and we won't have any issues around fidelity of implementation in order to see what needs to happen. But there's a significant amount of professional development and resources and support that have to go there. And so that's why that's been an ongoing conversation for both of those schools in terms of how do we get ready to open them. That's why they are listed in this presentation today, because, you know, it won't happen just because we wish it to. We got a plan for it.
One other thing, you mentioned wraparound services. And I guess that's kind of a precursor to our equity piece that we're gonna be discussing later on in our meeting. What do you see as a, when we talk about wraparound services priority? And how we go, how are we gonna go about making sure that we have the appropriate wraparound services for the schools that are really in need of them?
Well, wraparound services really should follow the children.
Okay.
And so we, I always characterize it this way. We're best at teaching and learning, and our community partners are best at supporting children and families. And if that's the case, how do we identify the children and families who are in the greatest of need? And sometimes that does become a whole-school model. We make very clear acceptance of that. And so when we talk about how are we doing it, you will see some actions that I will be taking through reorganization of central administration that will begin to bring a focus to those wraparound services and linking and doing some of the things, both with our internal departments and things, as well as the connections that we're trying to build external to the district to help with those wraparound opportunities.
Especially in need of, when we talk about the alternative programs, identifying the appropriate wraparound services.
Exactly, exactly.
Mr. Wall, you have it.
Sure. If I could just follow up on what Ms. Wagner was commenting on as well. I mean, I know we're here in early January, you've been here thirty days, so this is not a comment on your thirty days, per se, or previous. But we do have a sense of urgency, I think, regarding both schools, because the Camp Estella school is gonna be a choice school that was gonna require applications. And I also think that we need to consider the good model that the Academy for Discovery at Lakewood had, which was, they had the planning principle, and they kind of had a strong SPMT that was comprehensive from many parts of the community. And so I would just encourage you to look at that successful model. Clearly, it's in your presentation for a good reason, because you do have a sense of urgency. But I do want to reinforce what Ms. Wagner was saying, because she's right. Those are on the horizon, they're gonna open up in a matter of minutes, in essence, when it comes to time. And so I know you're meeting next week, so I think for us to get a frequent report back on how we're doing with that development, and then asking the board for support of whatever you need to make that happen. And again, if it's not in the budget today, doesn't mean you shouldn't do it. Please ask for the money.
Well, be clear that the one thing that started keeping me up in my first thirty days at night was getting ready to open these two schools. And not about the bricks and mortar, but about what would happen inside the buildings. So next week's meeting- So next week's meeting is not our first meeting.
I understand.
We've been having a number of conversations about, how do we do this? What our process? And we're really probably behind schedule with some of the reporting on the opening of these schools, and we will be bringing that forward. I mean, you know, we have to plan for the opening. My sense is that the brick and mortar planning took over the program planning. I think we always think we have more time for that. We should have been planning the inside piece, just as we have been the bricks and mortar. And so obviously, there's a gap there. The other piece in terms of the model that was applied for the Academy for Discovery Learning is certainly aspects of that model that we're looking at and considering, but none of that had been put in place yet for Richard Bowlin. And at this point, it's my responsibility as superintendent to see what else do I need to take off a person's plate?
Yes.
Because if we put one more thing on that plate, and then we all act astonished, if achievement doesn't improve, because they are focusing so much on what it takes to get ready for the visit by the IB for early years program, then that's our fault.
Right.
It's not the school's failure. And so that's why, at this point, getting that building open and then putting in place the structures that will support their movement into that early years program will allow it to be much more successful than just saying, we did it because we did it, and not doing it well.
Or even if we should do it earlier than before it opens, I mean, if we need to start some of that planning process.
Well, that's what I'm saying to you, Ms. Doyle. At this point, that school cannot take on that planning right now. We are not abandoning that planning, but there's a reality. We have a new principal.
Right.
Who is focused on building his leadership team and the results in that school. We have a new principal who is also focused on how do we exit one school to enter a new school, and all of the priority work of the school's underperforming status now. Though not a distraction, it would become a distraction for all of this other work if we're asking everybody to focus, okay, now, how do I think about IB? It's not the school's fault, it's not our fault, it hasn't happened, and as you brought me in as superintendent, I had to make a decision on how do we make it happen well. I'm sorry, but I do not believe in doing things halfway and then blame the failure on somewhere other than me. If I'm going to take it on, I'm going to take it on in a way in which it can be highly successful in that school, and all the supports and things are there, but it cannot happen in the second semester. It is a process. We're fortunate Dr. Rogers has experience in moving into IB programs, and so he'll be a great resource as we begin to have those discussions. But it wouldn't be fair to that principal or that school or that community, because it would, it wouldn't be done well. The advantage that the Academy of Discovery Learning had, that Richard Bowlin has not had, was a full planning year. So I am taking this step to create their planning year, once they're in that building, rather than cramming it into six months now.
Seeing?
Dr. Boone, I appreciate your comments that you just made about rushing into the programmatic planning for those two new schools. And as I've mentioned at previous work sessions, speaking of the programming, we have specialty programs in place that, you know, the pre-med engineering, young scholars, you know, at our middle schools and high schools. And what I don't feel that we have done is actually evaluated to see how well we are offering what we say we're going to offer. So as we do enter into this period of having new schools with various different types of programming, what are we doing with the programs that we do have in ensuring that we are providing the services that we say we're providing? And where does that fall into your, you know, assessment in the next, or now?
It's there. The short answer is, it's definitely there. You know, and if I had started, you know, everything had started in July, could have done some more of those assessments as part of the zero-based budgeting approach. Obviously, we can't get into all of that now, but we will be doing that. Because I have to make recommendations to the board of how we enhance programs, or whether or not they are working well, or whether there are some things that we need to stop doing because they aren't delivering on the results that we expected. And going forward, you would definitely hear those opportunities from me over time as various programs. You know, I agree, again, these lists that I provided today weren't exhaustive or all-inclusive. Alternative ed is one of my key concerns, for a lot of reasons, and particularly financial.
Okay, I have some things there. Can you speak a little more? We were talking quite a bit over the years about highly qualified, highly effective. In your presentation, you used the word effective. Can you define what that means to you, or what you envision it meaning for us as a district, or maybe how you would work with us as a team to really be able to qualify and quantify what that means? I know you mentioned earlier, when we talked about this comprehensive accountability system, and at one time, the district was having these conversations around powerful literacy, and we were using that and some other goals as some measure. But we often struggle and talk about, you know, what does effective mean? Do you have any initial thoughts on that?
There was a document that existed in Norfolk Public Schools known as High Quality Teaching and Learning Document. And it mapped out what an effective classroom would look like, what effective student learning would look like, and all of that. There are a number of examples of how we begin to define instructional effectiveness across the country. That's something that, again, as we think about, and in some of my upcoming conversations with teachers, that's what I'm trying to learn, you know, when I ask them the question, what's working well instructionally with you? You know, what do we know about? We're hearing very strong support for what's happening out at our mathematics department, and the way in which it's aligned, and the professional development, and the focus to help get improvement in mathematics. So there's a place that we look right within our district to see what's making the mathematics support system for schools lead to effectiveness in the classroom. And so I think we do have an obligation to figure out, to define, what does high-quality teaching and learning look like, you know? So that it's not left to chance. Research is very clear, you know, there, some states have conditions for effective schools. And so what do those look like? What are the aspects? What are the components of those schools that are highly effective? And how, again, it doesn't make it a cookie cutter approach that every school walks and talks the same, but you would be able to see those effective practices tailored to meet a school's unique demographics and need. And you see those in place, and those drive results. So when I talk about creating systems, that's part of that systems work, when I'm saying going forward. We have to create the systems for effectiveness, and therefore, the results with that. But for me, that's what it means.
You also mentioned pockets of strengths earlier, and I think we've talked about pockets of strengths quite a bit. But can you describe or share some of the strengths that you've seen thus far in your first 30 days?
You all want a lot for 30 days, my gracious. And two weeks of that was holiday.
I mean, you know.
I worked.
Actually, I was going to say you were working, because I know you were, I know you were working. And again, I mean, the context of it is not so much, I'm not looking for a list, but I'm looking for, because we've talked about it, and there's so much focus on, you know, wrongly wrong. But I just want to know if there are some immediate, low-hanging fruit of strengths that you see that we can build upon, that marry with our goals and marry with many other objectives that you've heard folks talk about earlier.
I was so excited, as I mentioned earlier, there was professional development for principals and assistant principals my first week here, that focused on the response to intervention or the tiered system of supports for students in schools. That gave me an opportunity to see, how are we talking about tiered systems of support and response to intervention as a district? What's the messaging around it? And how are we supporting that work going forward? How do we make it go from the half-day professional development that was occurring for elementary and middle and high schools, excuse me, to being the standard of practice and implemented across schools? So in terms of some really good news from that, I said to Dr. Rogers and others, I said, you know, I was really impressed on those two days, what I saw shared. When I followed up and had my monthly meeting with the Elementary Principals Association, we talked more about the response to intervention and what that looks like. One of the things that I, the notes that I made in that session that day, I said, how do we get this from being just a train-to-train model, but how do we scale it in a way that we can begin to see it in classrooms sooner? So we're now working to, Dr. Rogers and others are working to identify professional development opportunities for teachers by grade level or by content, where we can help them then spread the implementation through the schools. They feel supported by the work. I mean, we hear the comments about what's going well with that. And then, but how do we accelerate it, if you will? So, the teams that principals brought, you know, there were instructional specialists and others that came with them, teacher specialists that came with them, and they will support it. But we said, we can accelerate it if we begin to bring teachers together as part of that professional development, and they have it. And then there's greater numbers of folks in the building talking the same language at the same time, rather than the principals being the sole person, entity responsible for getting that information to the building level and supporting it that way. So that's an example, and just in this short time that I've been here, that I was very, very pleased with that. The companion piece, though, we've got to fix the lesson plans.
The last thing, just going back to the goals, the annual goals, the key performance indicators that we talked about earlier, you and I have talked about, you know, I shared with you that we had tied it to the accountability chart that we had. So part of what we did as a board in working on our ethics and then working on our norms and looking at those indicators, we've talked about, anybody can chime in if you disagree, that we really want, and we talked about it during the interview, the importance of the superintendent leading and helping and guiding us as a team and as a board in establishing those measures and those indicators, so that as a board, we can track success at various levels, and we can also communicate to the community how we are performing, and frankly, how it ties into our self-evaluation and yours. And so I just want to, one, reiterate how critically important that is to this board, and I can tell you, I will, this is not a board that's shy about, not shy about, making sure that we get that done.
Absolutely.
So with the, you know, you mentioned earlier about doing it at the January 20th workshop, we really need to see movement in that direction, so that we know that where we are today and what we can look at at the end of the year to say, this is what we have accomplished. So if you could just speak a little more about what you may need for us, if anything, as we approach that. And then, lastly, when you go back and look at these characteristics of the effective board and governance team and all this training that we go through, in my opinion, I think as a board, not just this board, but boards prior to us, because there has been so much transition, we have stepped in. And some of that may be good, some of it may not be good, some of it may have great results, and some of it may not have been. But can you, do you have any thoughts at this stage, and I know we're going to spend time in Charlottesville going through our own training, but do you have any thoughts at this stage around how that works for you and your leadership style as you meld as the new member of the team in this governing format that we have?
You know, I'm very pleased that we are having governance conversations. Too often, it seems that a superintendent and a board are running parallel agendas. And in the end, they're very similar, but not having the discussion about the shared goals and visions. And so I'm excited that we have that level of conversation that's going on, and that we're willing to have the courageous conversations about what's working and what's not, and where do we need to make adjustments? And you know, when you have those conversations, we knock on our own belief systems, and so how do we find consensus through tapping into certain belief systems and the various experiences that we bring, either as a board member, as a superintendent? The goals for the district should set the stage for what we're trying to do as a district. Doesn't represent everything. Too often, people think that the goals and those, the key performance indicators, just as we have a report card from the state around SOL performance and dropout rates and attendance, all of that, we're already reporting. When we take our own metrics and key performance indicators, we're saying that, yes, that report card is a subset of what we are talking about, but there are some things locally that are significant for us, and how do we make sure we are paying attention to those and developing those metrics in a way that we can say, not only are we moving on the state-level expectations that the community hears a lot about, but what are the things that are so valuable to us as a community, and are we making progress there? I think, you know, Ms. Doyle's comments about the facilities piece and making sure that the CIP is not lost as part of the conversation, that we do need great facilities and we have some needs that we have. How do we make sure we're having those discussions? That becomes a local conversation. You know, there's nothing that's mapped out in the state's report card that talks about the age of our buildings or any of that. So that's an example of what becomes our local context and what's important to us. You know, the issues of health and wellness. You know, there are certain mandates that we have as a school district to address those, but how we do them well, the local focus. And so those are the things that we begin to build into the metrics beyond that, what the state would have us to do. And so I think this is where we are. I mean, you all help bring context for me when we have these discussions on things that are in the goals and metrics and why they were there, because I have a couple of question marks. Why are we looking at that? But I need to know the context of what's there, so that I can make sense out of it and see how do we weave, or in the case of some, do I offer a substitute for something else because of some discoveries and learning that I've made as it relates to it? But I don't see us having to abandon any of that with me as the new team member, in order to say, oh, we've got to throw all of that out and we've got to start anew. There's a lot of time and significance and meaning while that's there, and so we need to make sure that we continue to build.
Anyone else? So, thank you, Dr. Boone, very much. That was helpful. You've done a lot in 30... I mentioned seeing you out in the community, I think, I think before you started, I saw you at Golden Corral, and then I ran into you at the mall on Christmas Eve. So it's good to see you out and about and look forward to running into you at Harris Teeter as well. So...
Go there, too. I even got a Christmas present. I have my own cart now, so I don't even have to. I got my own cart.
What we're going to do is proceed on with the agenda for academic affairs. I would ask the board if we could just take a two-minute break, just to give you a chance to refresh, that was an hour and a half, refresh your ice, give Dr. Boone a chance to stretch her legs. And so we'll, I have 3:28 on my computer. So we'll start again in a couple of minutes. Also, give the board an opportunity to check microphones out. So, thank you. Next on the agenda is academic affairs update. Dr. Boone?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. At our last work session, when we presented the elementary district benchmark assessments, we indicated that the secondary ones would be coming forward, and that this will be the last time that we do them as separate entities. We will be doing, you know... Elementary, middle, and secondary combined, and high school. The other piece that I remind the board, that benchmark assessments are designed... The other piece that I remind the board, that benchmark assessments are designed to check in and help us test our curriculum and our pacing and instruction and if we need to make adjustments. And so this is to see how well we are aligned, how well we're doing. Because if our students are doing well with this, then we, we're in a good place. Otherwise, we need to make adjustments. And where the alignment is very tight and very strong, then we talk about supports that we may need for students or additional professional development and supports for teachers. So that's the context for, um, this presentation and, and this afternoon is middle and high school. So I'll ask Dr. Rogers to present.
Thank you, Dr. Boone. Chairman Jordan, board members, thank you for allowing me to come and bring you attention upon the presentation I will share with you at your board session back in December. So this will be a continuation, some of the presentation will be.
Going to what you received back in December. So I'll breeze through that piece so as not to spend too much time reiterating the same information. But again, as Dr. Boone shared, to remind you that the purpose of our district-wide assessment program, particularly with our common formative assessments and our DBAs, division benchmark assessments, is to give teachers as well as students an opportunity to get some information to change and adjust instruction accordingly. There are two types of assessments that we administer in Norfolk Public Schools, the first of which is the summative assessment, and those are things like our SOLs. Those pieces of assessments give us a snapshot of how students have performed over usually an extent, an extended period of time, and it gives a great measure of what students know and are able to do after the instruction has taken place. Conversely, formative assessments are given periodically over shorter periods of time. And again, they're giving teachers as well as students an opportunity to see what has been mastered over a shorter period of time so that instruction can be adjusted. So where we at our first quarter? And just to reiterate the information that was shared with you during your December board session, as you can see from the graph very quickly, that we have seen improvements in our reading at the elementary level as well as in our math. And we have a little bit of work that we need to do for our history as well as our science, uh, courses. And I share with you what the senior coordinators and as well as the teacher specialists are doing to work with those schools that need, uh, some additional assistance in terms of planning for those areas. This slide you also saw, and it breaks down by grade level for second, third, fourth, and fifth grade in reading, math, and history. You can see how they are performing there. And again, we talked about this at our, at your December meeting. So now I'd like to transition into where we are after our first quarter with our secondary schools, and we'll talk about our middle schools and our high schools in that order. So as you can see from this slide, it gives three years of data for our first quarter CFAs, our, um, common formative assessments as well as our DBAs. And as you can see, we have seen growth in all areas in English, math, science, and social studies from two thousand fourteen, fifteen through two thousand, uh, fifteen sixteen. And I'll talk a little bit about later to what do we attribute the success of the change from last year and this year. While we recognize we certainly have room for growth, we are pleased to see that our students are making some progress as compared to this time last year. And again, the CFAs give data for teachers as well as students to focus on any reteaching that needs to take place or any things that they, things that they need to consider for the subsequent quarter. And that data from this year further broken down by grade levels. You can see we have sixth, seventh, and eighth grade data. And without going into any grade level of detail because you have it in front of you, we are focusing on, of course, English K-12. Math particularly, our students who are in algebra, we're spending a little bit more time, uh, focusing on providing professional development and support with those teachers because typically those students that are in algebra are typically our students who are higher achieving students. So we want to make sure that we have proper alignment between our curriculum instruction as well as our assessment. Same thing holds true for our history and world geography. And similarly with our students who are taking biology. So we're spending a little bit more time focusing on those, uh, areas as well. So that's our middle school. Our end of course, our high school, as you can see, we have it broken down over a period of three years. And we have seen growth from this time last year as compared to this year in all of our core subject areas, and we're pleased about that. And we're certainly continuing with working with those schools who require some additional support. And I'll expand upon that in just a few minutes. And if you look at the end of course, uh, the first quarter DBA results by specific content area, as you can see, we're doing very well in history, World History II, algebra I, as well as geometry, again, our, our focuses right now, FOKI, if you will, as well as biology and chemistry. So we spend a little bit more time in those areas and making progress in the other areas. So how's that data driving instruction for our second quarter? And we're certainly well into our second quarter, as Dr. Boone mentioned earlier. We're about to approach our second semester. So what have we been doing? And if you remember at our last meeting, we talked about this very slide, about the response to intervention and us having a strong focus division-wide and creating a common language about what response to intervention is. And it is a nationally, uh, recognized research-based process that we're spending a lot of time talking about as a, the, the vision and the types of interventions that are taking place, not only at the elementary level. And I shared, uh, some specific photos from Ocean View Elementary School to give you a snapshot of what those interventions might look like in the classroom. And some similar practices are taking place at the secondary level, although they're not as, um, a common of practice at the secondary level, particularly small group instruction we're getting there. It's a work in progress, uh, but nevertheless, they do take place at all three levels. And additionally, at the bottom half of that slide, you have some sample resources that we use to support those interventions, and they're there. I Ready is new to us this year and it's only in our elementary schools. And we don't have any, uh, quantitative data right now to show, you know, how we are progressing with that in terms of how teachers like it. I think I love the comment about getting a, um, progress monitoring in terms of how things are working. And I Ready is certainly one of those programs that we'll get some feedback with from our teachers. However, qualitatively in conversation with our building principals and with some of our teachers that are using it, they appear to like the information that they're getting from, uh, I Ready. Of course, we have Wilson Reading and then Read 180, uh, reading and math. And I did have an opportunity to take a field trip over to Virginia Beach where they've had, uh, Re: Run 180 in place now for, uh, several years to see how it's actually supposed to look. So I'm excited about having the opportunity to share what I've learned with our instructional staff as well as our middle school principals with that. Next steps for the second quarter, and again, we're well into second quarter, so what have we been doing? Our focus has been at the secondary level, focusing on strategic reading strategies for comprehension of rigorous fiction as well as nonfiction texts and looking at paired passages. Uh, and that's an area that when we look in and breaking down skills that kids have difficulty with at the secondary level is using those strategic reading strategies. For example, just reading a passage twice or three times or highlighting or under, underlining information, text, stuff that we did, um, uh, in high school as well as in college. Sometimes students don't always take time to go back and do that. Looking at word analysis strategies, using root words, affixes as well as suffixes, uh, word origins, as well as context clues when kids have difficulty reading. And lastly, focusing on instructional components of the writing process. And I probably should have bolded this word, feedback with student writing. Students get better at writing when you provide them feedback and they get a chance to know what they did wrong. And when we don't do that, they, it takes them a little while longer to understand what skills they are not mastering, especially when it comes to writing. So that's what we're working on with English. The PD is commensurate with what I shared with you with the elementary piece that I shared last month, the RTI process as well as lesson plan. We heard quite a bit about that this afternoon, and we will certainly continue our work with making sure that the RTI process is consistent across the school division. You'll hear a lot about unpacking and reviewing standards. We spent quite a bit of time working on that with our building principals this year with ARP, which is the Aligning Academic Review and Performance Evaluation with the state. We met, spent five, uh, months, once a month focusing on that. Alignment of our curriculum, our instruction as well as our assessment, we will continue working on that. And again, having a strong focus on word study vocabulary instruction. And lastly, I probably should have focused on this, coaching and modeling. One of the questions that came up last month was how are we using our support staff well? And what's the needs assessment, and particularly when it's, when it comes to our math or reading specialists? And that's something that, um, I'm in the process of facilitating what that will look like in terms of asset mapping, taking a look at all of our, not only our tangible resources, our computer resources and other programs, but also our human resources and asking the question, are we using them to the capacity that should be used? And are we offering them professional development so that they can offer the best services possible to our students? And lastly, what are we doing differently for our focus priority and our third-year warrant schools and offering them some pretty strategic support? And we have a principals' meeting next week where I will share with them how we plan to differentiate the, the support that we offer, our focus priority and third-year warrant schools, because it is the second semester. And not that I'm getting nervous, but I want to make sure that, um, we, they're clear about the support that we're offering them from the division level without, um, offering too much support, because they have some great things taking place. We just need to make sure that we are doing everything that we can do at this level to support them. So we'll continue with our focused observations and offering them feedback. We did spend quite a bit of time over the month of December conducting walkthroughs with, uh, the Virginia Department of Education and offering them, uh, some feedback. However, I think we can be a little more purposeful and strategic with the feedback that we offer them because that's what they've asked for. And I think if you operate from the context, you can't grow if you don't know. So if you see things and you can offer them suggestions for improvement, that they're looking for that. So we'll continue with that practice with our, uh, special schools. And then also modeling, coaching, and then co-teaching. We have quite a bit of support resources in our school division. One of the things that I've been doing with our lead turnaround partners has been meeting with them once a month. We have three of them, I think. We have a meeting scheduled tomorrow with Pearson, is having conversations with regard to how we're using their staff that are in those schools, the reading and the math support specialists. So making sure that there's modeling and co-teaching taking place with our, some of our newer teachers that really need that additional added extra support as well as offering those supports from the division level. And then Dr. Boone mentioned this a little earlier, talking about grade level strategic planning and having an emphasis on targeted areas of weakness. The CFAs and the DBAs give us that information. Our schools also do some, uh, other informative, uh, assessments. Uh, we talked about exit slips much earlier during the course of, uh, this year and how exit slips can be used by teachers to assess what kids know and understand and are able to do. So we'll continue with that with English. That's our big area in English. Mathematics, order of operations, integer operations, and problem solving. And if you break problem solving down even more, it's word problems and helping students navigate that. And if you break down word problems even further, you can attribute that to English. So they kind of work hand in hand and in tandem, so we'll continue our work with that. In the professional development, you'll see a lot of the same, unpacking and reviewing our standards and spending time on the RTI process and really addressing that first-tiered instruction. And again, problem-solving strategies. The focus priority and third-year warrant school support is commensurate with what we will offer with our English staff as well. Science and social studies, excuse me, history and social science, incorporating essential skills within a lesson, uh, aligning materials as well as activities to the standards, that's the alignment of the curriculum instruction assessment. We're continuing our work with that. And then sometimes you don't always see this in social studies because you don't always, um, find opportunities. But if you look at the picture, you have kids working on a hands-on activity with a project, but looking to create hands-on inquiry-based activities in order to deliver content and to drive instruction and not just make it rote memory, which is often what can happen with history and social science. So focusing on engagement, student engagement. The professional development is similar. The standards, um, have changed a little bit for history and social studies, social science. So we'll focus on the two hundred, two thousand fifteen essential skills and again, unpacking those standards to understand what's going to be taught. And lastly, focusing on student engagement and bringing history to life, if you will. The differentiated support that we'll provide for focus priority and third-year warrant schools will be commensurate with the English and math. For science, the focus has been on scientific inquiry. That's the scientific method, uh, when I was in school. It's a new name now. Student engagement, uh, getting kids excited about learning and doing hands-on activities, unpacking and reviewing standards. One of the things that we found out when we went through a couple of exercises with our principals was, um, really, I'm taking a standard and unpacking it and, and teaching what the standard is asking to be taught rather than teaching why you're teaching deep and really focusing on those, um, adjectives and verbs that are within the standard and breaking them down. And we've had some experience with it prior to, but it's been really eye-opening with our principals to see, uh, what it's like to unpack and review standards with their staff. Lesson design as well as unit planning is also focused for a science, and then differentiating instruction is what they're focusing on. Professional development is not different from what I've just shared, so I won't spend a whole lot of time on that, um, with the exception of reading comprehension. One of the things that we learn, particularly in, um, our biology and, and chemistry, is that in many instances, if kids were having difficulty with some of the areas, it can be attributed to some type of reading, um, comprehension issue. So we're focusing on that as well. And the differentiated support that we'll offer for those schools in need are the same. So what can we expect from academic affairs? Targeted professional development for administrators, particularly in areas of special education and data analysis, uh, and the development of teacher-made assessments. Uh, our secondary, um, schools are very much into wanting to, um, have professional development on teachers being able to create common formative assessments within the context of their own schools, and rightfully so. We understand because you have different, um, needs at different schools. Uh, we also continue the work that we started with ARP. We spent quite a bit of time with the Virginia Department of Education focusing on some real, strong strategies instructionally in terms of building our instructional leadership capacity. So we do want to continue that, one of which is unpacking standards as well as, uh, providing good solid feedback on lesson planning and not just saying, "Good job," but really speaking to what the lesson plan is, uh, focusing on. Response to intervention training, we'll continue our work with that. We did complete our second of three strategically designed, um, activities with our building principals as well as our assistant principals, which we follow up and offer coaching support, our executive directors, as well as myself, uh, to our principals with that. Review of guided reading practices. One of the things that came out early in Dr. Boone's comments is that we have a, uh, a huge need to focus on our K-12 literacy program, and we do have plans in place to begin, um, our K-12 literacy model review and which will involve stakeholders from schools, buildings, our teachers, administrators, um, input from staff, students, parents, not necessarily the business community, but we're certainly looking forward to doing that. And, uh, we will certainly continue our work on providing focused classroom observations with feedback. And I mentioned earlier, but monitoring the work of our lead turnaround partners in terms of how we differentiate with it. We have, um, some, a huge investment in our lead turnaround partners, and I'll just kind of leave it at that. So I certainly want to make sure that we are doing everything that we can at this level to support the work that they're doing in those, in the schools that they're in. All right? And that's it. Uh, so I hope I didn't talk too fast.
No comment.
No comment.
Anyone, uh, Dr. Gabriel, it will go around the horn.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Dr. Rogers, for the presentation. Uh, just to go back, if we want to pull up the slides for just a second, um, when we're looking at our, uh, CFA and DBA results, when we say proficient, what exactly are we defining as proficient?
Which slide?
Which slide?
Any, any of them, just green. Are we saying proficient is scoring a certain level? Or are we saying that they have mastered the concept?
Proficient is typically set at seventy, right? It's set at seventy for all of them.
Seventy?
Yes.
And our goal is to see more green and less of the red?
Absolutely.
Okay. Um, when we, when, when you are discussing the next steps, um, and specifically, I'm, I'm looking at the focus and the priority in the third-year warrant schools because we have a, a big group of those.
Right.
I see that you have a lot of focus and attention on what we can do with their teaching staff. And as Dr. Boone had mentioned earlier, we're in the business of teaching. Are we doing anything intentional to look at parent engagement, how we can bring parents and... How we can bring parents and other people who support the children to help them in the process? Are we doing anything intentional to look at that? And then are we doing anything intentional to look at if discipline weighs into any of the barriers to education that are occurring in the classroom? One of the things that I noticed was you pointed out algebra. Parents may not be able to help their kids with algebra because they may not know algebra themselves. So what are we, are we doing anything to intentionally focus on those aspects?
Well, yes. Part of the school improvement plans that each school has involves, has a parent involvement component. As a matter of fact, I think we have parent engagement specialists in most, if not all of our schools. And they have to have a pretty strategic plan with how they go about engaging parents and families with the instructional process. The second part of your question dealt with the discipline. And the RTI process is commensurate with our PBIS process. So in addition to the school improvement plans with instruction, each school does create a plan that encompasses the tiered system of supports in terms of behavior. So, and each school has, they have some pretty extensive plans in place to directly address those. And from our level and the manner in which we support them, we do have staff who monitor the behavior supports it very closely and she does a phenomenal job. And I think she gave a presentation to you all a couple of meetings ago where she shared how they were coming along with that process. And those conversations are certainly ongoing. And I do think that based on the information that she shared is that we are certainly seeing progress with regard to how we monitor student behavior in our schools as well as how we respond to it.
Ms. Doyle?
So two questions. First, a comment. I think it's a great presentation and I am pleased that you're able to say with such confidence and the data shows that we're making progress year over year. So I think the way you're presenting the data makes that very clear to understand. So I want to appreciate, I want to thank you for that and also just acknowledge the work of the division because we are making great progress and that bodes well for our future. So two questions. What type of additional training and support are we doing for new teachers that we weren't already doing? That's the first. And I can't recall my second, so go ahead and start on the first yet. Oh, I know. Given Dr. Rogers and Dr. Boone, your recent arrivals here, but knowing curriculum like you both do, have you found any gaps in the alignment of our curriculum to what we're teaching and what the state's asking us to teach? Because I know Dr. King very much focused on that and I think he was making progress and strides on that. And I was just wondering, have you identified any challenges in that area?
I'll start and let Dr. Rogers piggyback. We've certainly found the strength of the things that have been done. There's still some places we need to focus some attention. And then the alignment of any professional learning or professional development that needs to support that aspect. And that's why when we do these, these quarterly benchmarks, it gives us a way of saying, you know, we ask ourselves the question, is this a curriculum issue? Is this a, a teaching issue? Is this a learning issue? And in that way, we know where we need to make adjustments or provide supports.
Right, okay. And then what, what new, what are we doing in addition to what we're currently doing for the new teachers? Because I know we had teacher mentors and we started that at the beginning of the year, but clearly there are teachers that still need great help, which is wonderful.
Well, and that's a great question. I think we have teacher mentors. That's definitely one thing that we do. Our senior coordinators as well as our teacher specialists spend quite a bit of time with our new teachers. Typically when they ask principals for input in regard to how they can support them, it's with support of our new teachers, providing them coaching support, assistance with lesson planning. It's not uncommon to see our instructional staff going to a team meeting where they're able to provide feedback to staff with regard to lesson plans. Particularly with lesson plans, you'll hear that time and time again. And modeling what good lessons look like. I have asked our lead turnaround partners to pay close attention to first year teachers and, well, newer teachers in the schools that they offer support in. And they've been fantastic with responding to that. It's commensurate with what our principals are asking as well. We certainly plan, we just went through the budget process and I did review Valerie Ford's budget, who works directly with our new teachers. And she has asked for additional funds to support a program that was in place in previous years that does support first, second and third year teachers. So we are very in tune to offering support to new teachers and making sure that we do everything that we can to make sure that they come back.
Great, thank you.
Dean?
Okay, thank you, Dr. Rogers. I have a couple of brief questions. So in talking about, you talked a lot about the professional development that's being offered in your, what are we doing now to improve the results, the academic performance? And my question for you is, are we, do we know that professional development is, you know, we always need professional development, but is that what we need to improve the performance for our students? Or could it be that other factors that are at play such as scheduling and the pacing of the content? Because I know in algebra, you know, I have, you know, heard that that is a concern among parents. And perhaps that the scheduling of some of our secondary courses could be contributing to how students are performing.
And I think that's a great question as well. I think that there are multiple layers to that question. However, I do believe that in any profession, you have to have professional development in order to grow. You absolutely have to have it. And I think that whenever you have an opportunity to learn something, you're going to be better at your craft. So that's definitely a given. Your question about the schedule, the schedule absolutely has an effect upon outcomes. And one of the things that we've asked our principals to do as part of the RTI process, actually the first meeting was to have them take a hard, fast look at, you know, what are the barriers that may be getting in the way of student achievement? One of which was to look at scheduling. And we talked about bowling elementary. I had a conversation, my, my follow-up coaching conversation with the principal, bowling elementary. One of the outcomes from his first RTI session was an aha about their schedule. So one of the things that he had an opportunity to do, of course, this at the elementary level, was to reshape what they were doing with their schedule and using their staff. And he had some assistance from learning support with navigating the schedule. So it does. I know that was a long answer to your question, but yes, we do have some steps in place for them to take a look at not only professional development, but what other pieces may have an effect on outcome.
Okay. Are you also looking at attendance and its correlation with performance?
We have not as of yet, but that is absolutely, ABCs, attendance, behavior and academics behavior and coming to school, I call them ABCs. So we certainly do look at that when we have coaching sessions with principals.
Okay. And in addition to what you've provided with the district, the benchmark results, how are we or where are we with the federal monitoring reports?
Funny you should mention that. We have a federal monitoring report, quarterly report that's due February, where is the link? It's due February, so February, February eighth, it's due February eighth. So we're in the process of pulling that, those items together to share and return to the state. It's the second quarter. We don't have to do one for the first quarter, but the second and third and fourth.
Okay, you don't have to do one for the first quarter. So, okay. That's it.
Dr. Robinson, yeah?
One request and two quick comments. One is you mentioned the parent engagement process and the specialist within the schools. And they have a, some sort of strategic plan, as you said. I don't know how elaborate that is, but I would like a report on that in the future to see what steps are being made to actually engage the parents. Because parent engagement can be at different levels from joining the PTA to making sure your kid's at school on time. But I'd like to see that process. Two, the modeling and the co-teaching is terribly important. And again, being a former teacher, I think back to how bad I was and how I needed help. I needed professional development and it just wasn't there. That you're basically thrown into a classroom with a lesson, with a book and said, do it. And I failed miserably because of that. So I encourage us to really take a close look at that because we have so many newer faculty members that they, they need the help, all the support they can get. And the last thing is, is your comment about reading comprehension in science programs. I think back to my professional education and, you know, studying neuroanatomy and physiology. It's a foreign language. And to these kids, scientific terminology is a foreign language. It needs to be looked at in that sense and, and almost taught as a foreign language because then they can, they understand the words and they can understand the concepts behind it. But a lot of times you just, and again, I go back to my own history and you just read over it and you don't, it doesn't, doesn't sit.
Okay.
So.
Thank you. My three. Wagner?
Okay, mine was just kind of in the form of analysis. Looking at your history, and I looked at history two, and there were such as the green. Proficient. What is it about history two that they're more, that they can reach proficiency so much better than the other ones? Have we done an analysis to see exactly is the course?
Do we attribute our success? Well, I think historically we've done well. Do you want to add?
A lot of our.
Want to come up?
Bruce Brady.
This is Mr. Brady. He's our senior coordinator for history and social studies.
In a lot of our schools, the World History Two has a different population of students taking the course. It tends to be more honors students, smaller population at, at multiple schools. Students only need one credit in a world history course for the standard diploma. They need two courses in world studies for the advanced diploma. And so many of our students who are on the track for the advanced diploma also take the world history two where not all of the students do as they do with world history one.
Demographics of students, that makes a difference.
Yes, yes, yes.
The other thing is that, oh, thank you. No.
Oh, okay.
I'm looking at the algebra one and analysis again. Why is it that we, there's such a significant difference? Well, I mean, the math is a problem in itself, but is it because of, are they ninth graders, tenth graders? Are they coming from, are they eighth graders? Are they coming from junior high school? How have we analyzed the population of students to see why they're scoring so poorly? In that algebra one section?
You find similar instances to what Mr. Brady just shared with you with regard to students taking algebra. If you think about the spectrum of math courses, algebra being the entry level math course at the high school level. So you're going to find students that are typically enrolled in algebra and not your students who have taken algebra already in middle school. So they may have some struggles initially during that first quarter because it is a new content area. So demographics may be different. Whereas with geometry, you may have students who have already had algebra.
Well, I guess I'm asking, is there something that can be done in the, in the junior high, middle school level to prepare so that?
Well, I was going to piggyback on what Mr. Brady was saying. If you look at the chart that shows the algebra one first quarter results in middle school, they are almost twice the success than ones in high school. And so it goes to the point, the students who generally take algebra one in middle school are usually our stronger academic students. And so they begin there so that they can have four years of math beyond algebra and they get it in high school. When you get to ninth grade, generally ninth grade math is algebra one. And so everything that we're doing to build up to readiness for algebra one is either the readiness in middle school or the readiness by ninth grade. And so that becomes that whole focus that we have on how do we support students? And how do we shape it in a way that they can be successful in algebra? That, you know, a long time ago, we used to call algebra a gatekeeper course. And now algebra is a required course. And so we have to make sure that we aren't swinging the gate in a way that our students aren't being successful. But we have to look at what are the options around algebra one. But that is a requirement.
Yeah, okay, well, I mean, makes sense. I guess my, my question is that in terms of professional development or whatever, what, and looking at the analysis of where, what's happening here? Are we doing anything differently in the middle school to make sure that they're assured more success? Once they come into the, come into ninth grade and have to take a course, the required algebra course? What are we doing differently?
The, the algebra one course at middle school is the same as the algebra one course in ninth grade. So, so that, when they come into that, if they successful, they are successful in middle school, they're done with that.
Right, but my, I understand that. But I guess what I'm seeing is that those that have not taken it in middle school and they come to high school, which are, they're weaker students. What preparation, have we changed the preparation in terms of the middle school approach to assure more?
Is Mr. Irwin here? I was wondering if he was here can help because again, and catch me in a few months, I can talk it. But right now, I haven't had this conversation at that depth yet.
Thirty days, I understand.
Good afternoon. The, so two parts to that answer. One part is we are re-looking significantly at our pathways in middle school towards algebra one and valuing a stronger base of pre-algebra material before we rush a student into algebra one, which will translate into more students taking algebra one having some, right now, we've got some students taking it with only a sixth grade math, pre-algebra curriculum. We're going to be preparing them with more. The seventh and eighth grade material will be provided to those students before they take it. And we're not going to rush them to algebra one before they're ready. That would be answer number one. And then answer number two is we are re-looking at the eighth grade material. We've seen great growth because that's the group we're speaking about is those freshmen, the ninth graders and the 10th graders that are taking algebra one. And doing some vertical talk, sixth, seventh and eighth, we've seen the growth. It's just kind of slow going. If you'll notice, the chart in algebra one is, is moving in the right direction from year to year, but it's, it's not moving quick enough. And so the eighth grade jumped by 10 points last year and we're seeing them have some more backbone to their growth. But we're working with the eighth grade teachers and the ninth grade teachers to say, how can instruction be, our instructional practices, how can they be more similar in ninth grade to what they're seeing in eighth grade so that they have a better chance of success with material in ninth? But the ultimate answer is what I touched on first. We're, we're trying to, there may have been a rush in the past to get into algebra one as early as possible. And we're saying maybe that wasn't the most helpful choice and that maybe we need to slow it to give them more background in some pre-algebra material so that their chances of success in algebra one are stronger.
And the, the other piece that goes along with that, for those teachers who are not teaching algebra and they're teaching math, six, Mr. Irwin might want to stay by, see if he agrees philosophically. And it's okay to say if you don't. I'm very, very serious about that, very sincere. But we know that teachers who generally teach the grade level math may not have had as much college level math as an algebra one or beyond teacher. And so making sure that our middle school math teachers and our elementary math teachers have a better mathematics background through college also begins to support what happens with our mathematics feeding into algebra. That's, that's a significant, when you look at teacher prep programs, college algebra is usually the terminal point for elementary and perhaps even, a middle school math teacher may have one more course beyond that. If we want to capture what's happening with math, then we need to really look at, what are the math courses that our math teachers at elementary and middle schools have had? Because that, down the road, that may be something we want to offer some additional courses so that they can strengthen their work. One of the programs I was successful in working with in Worcester was with Worcester State University in the development of an elementary education major with a mathematics emphasis because that's not usually what the math looks like. And so that's another piece. So we talk about what the results look like, whether or not the students are ready. But we also have to talk about what's the academic readiness that our teachers bring to it. No fault of their own, they complete a program that goes to a point. And what we know about mathematics now, we've learned so well in education, is getting at the issues of misconceptions that are perpetuated. the issues of misconceptions that are perpetuated over time and our not being able to address that. And we often know, we're here, teachers, we will say it ourselves, I'm not strong in math. You know, it was only through understanding this piece of misconceptions that I realized I had learned fractions as representing a whole, that all fractions represented a whole. So you had a pizza and there were eight slices, eight eighths equals one whole. Well, all fractions don't equal a whole. And so, but yet, that's, has traditionally been one of the ways we teach fractions at the elementary level. So it is about how do we also infuse higher level math for our teachers to feel comfortable approaching the content in a way that our kids can also be successful. So that's the idea of scaffolding both the students and the teachers.
Right. And it's not just a middle school. It's a, it's a definitely, definitely an elementary issue.
You know, it just makes me go back to, and I'm going to be thrilled because he's giving me this eye here and I'm feeling it. So when we talk about highly qualified, I'm wondering if we need to redefine that in terms of our core curriculum, looking at what you, in terms of, let's say, a math teacher. And maybe we, to make them highly qualified in that curriculum area, maybe we should or could offer maybe more of a math course or whatever that's needed so that they can, so that we can have more success.
It's certainly something to think about and it's also great for when we have those conversations with higher ed. What do we know about the needs of our teachers in terms of going forward? Because the most elementary teachers would be stronger reading teachers than they would math and science. And usually when we find the strong math and science teachers, that was an interest that they had. And so how do we move intentionally into making sure that the strength in the teacher prep programs is such that we get those results from day one?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm just, you know, it's almost 4:30 and I know we want to dive into the equity policy. So just want to-
I feel the danger.
Make sure we do what we have to do, but also be cognizant of our time. So.
I really appreciate Doyle's question about and comment about the support of the first year teachers. This has been a concern that we've had for several years and we ask this question each year and not confident that the administrative, administration has responded in a way that is different from previous year. So it's good to hear that you are going to give additional support to the first year teachers. Another issue that we have dealt with in terms of development of our teacher core and leadership is mentors for principals. And again, we, we have suggested and asked and this kind of a thing. I'm wondering whether your plans for mentoring of new principals, whether you have made any progress in that area.
We have, and each of our new principals does have a mentor. Actually, they have a couple of mentors. And as a matter of fact, we have partnered with, well, not Norfolk Public Schools, Virginia Department of Education partnered with Virginia Tech. So our principals that require mentoring are also receiving a report from them. So they get quite a bit of mentoring, a very purposeful and strategic to help them with what they're working with.
So one of the, this last comment here, Mr. Chairman, is one of the thoughts behind this was that we would be able to see mentors who have taught in the district, who are familiar with the schools, who are familiar with the teaching staff and are able to provide mentoring that is very relative to that particular school. And so I'm hoping that we would be able to draw from some of our really distinguished former principals to do some of this mentoring as well. Thank you.
All right. Coming back to Dr. Robinson, Ms. Bessine, then we're going to close out.
And I don't want to take a lot of time. I just want to bring a little historical perspective since I'm the old man on the board. The Council of Greater City Schools' report on middle schools showed that one of the reasons why we had problems with middle school math was the pacing and was the, the way that the course, courses were taught, but also the rigor at the elementary school was not there. So this was identified four years ago. So what we're hoping is that as the rigor at the elementary schools ramped up, that'll be reflected in middle school and eventually in high school too.
Ms. Bessine?
Yeah. Dr. Robinson, I share, I share that similar thought about laying that foundation, that strong foundation at the elementary level. But one of, one of the question, my question is more around, I know we're moving to, you know, devices and electronic resources, but I find that we're kind of straddling this textbook and, you know, electronic resource age and the sharing of textbooks. I mean, I know as, I speak as a parent as well who is going through it. It's, it's difficult to, A, at home, help your child if you are not, you know, well-versed in the subject area or rather, as my son likes to tell me, is we're not learning it that way, you know? And I try, I show him my way, but that's not the way. That's actually more confusing to the child. So I wonder how much does that play a role even for them to reference when they come home and they do their homework? How do they reference the material that they're learning in class so that they can reinforce what they're doing while they're doing their homework? And is that playing a role? And is that something that we need to consider during the budget preparation that we're about to enter? Yeah.
Specific content?
Well, in math specifically and science, I see, you know, the science workbooks are there, but the math is where I hear more about the sharing of the textbooks among grade levels, especially at the middle school level and perhaps at the high school level. But I hear it among the middle school level. And I think that can be a detriment to a child who's independently, you know, learning and reinforcing what they're doing in class.
I'll have to do a little more investigation about that.
All right. I just had one.
You said you would.
Damn, but I get it right. You're as a chair, you don't get to talk as much. But I just wanted to throw out for the board and for you, Dr. Boone, I feel that the, my colleagues got more out of the presentation than I did and not necessarily this, but I mean, in general, we get, we've had these DBA results and charts for at least the time that I've been on the board. I'd just like to know, in addition to that, if there's some way we can focus on, you know, some evidence of some things. So, you know, I think it's good to get all the information that we got, but I think what we all did, we honed in on the chart and then we immediately started looking at the chart. And I know you've talked about some different ways of presenting the data, but if there is some way we can talk about as we look at how we do things moving forward, you know, how we hone in on what it is that the administration wants the board to understand, maybe some highlights and maybe some challenges and then having some evidence of some things. So we'll get a presentation, so we're doing this and we're doing that, but it's not like we get to see some evidence of it.
Sure.
And so that's, I'm just throwing that out there in the atmosphere for us to-
We can, we'll have a conversation and vet it that way and see what it can look like.
Yeah, I mean, if others feel similar in that regard, because, you know, I know, Ms. Wagner, as you, you know, drill down and listen to the questions, there's so much we can talk about, but if there are just some things you can highlight and then kind of drill down and say, when we say we're improving the lesson plans, just show an example of it. So we have an understanding of what it was before and what it's like now. So that's my comment on that. Thank you and thank you very much, Dr. Rogers and the team. I'm going to ask the board's indulgence for a slight shift. I do want us to get into the policy review piece and I'm not sure how much we are going to spend under the operation business and finance with the budget outlook. I know we want to get that as well. But we have a special guest with us today. We've approved our budget and we also worked as a team with Ms. Doyle and Dr. Thornton leading the way for us to have greater advocacy in Richmond and as needed, I guess, in Washington, DC, but just greater advocacy for our legislative priorities. And rather than have our guests through our final two hours of our meeting, I thought it might be a good opportunity for us to introduce him, have him come and share his thoughts, what he's working on, what we've talked about, and then do that piece and then we can come back and follow the rest of the agenda. So, Dr. Boone, I'll turn it over to you and then you all can do your dominoes of introductions.
Absolutely. And I didn't know if Ms. Doyle or Dr. Thornton would really like to introduce the, our, our guest.
Dr. Thornton?
Okay, our new partner.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, School Board members and Dr. Boone. Mr. Chairman has already done a great job of kind of putting in context what, what this next segment will cover, and that is the introduction of Mr. Ron Jordan of Advantage Strategies. And some of his associates are here. At your last business meeting, you approved the administration to contract with a professional legislative affairs firm to come in and really advocate on behalf of Norfolk Public Schools. As the largest urban district in the Commonwealth of Virginia, we realize the need to have someone who is very skilled, someone, a firm that knows politics and legislation in Virginia particularly, that relates to K-12 and in the urban setting as well. So I'm pleased to introduce to the board, Mr. Ron Jordan of Advantage Strategy, and he also has two of his associates with him.
Good afternoon.
Mr. Jordan?
Yes, great name.
That's right. I'm Ron Jordan. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I'm one of the owners of Advantage Strategies, which is a government relations firm in Richmond. We've been in business since 1998. I spent 15 years at House Appropriations Committee and so my focus is in working on the Norfolk Public Schools team is going to be on money. We have, our firm has a lot of experience with urban schools. We know them particularly well and have a particular affinity for the challenges facing urban, urban schools. Our team's going to be led by Mark Flynn and Mark will tell you a couple of things about himself in a minute. And will also join us on our team will be John Acaboon. For those of you who haven't been to Richmond or worked in the K-12 space, last count, there were 10 committees or subcommittees dealing with K-12 issues. One person can't be in one place and cover them all at the same time. And so that's why we always provide a team to make sure that you get what you need, that we're always going to, you're always going to be represented in every meeting that has a potential to affect the division. And we'll be having weekly meetings with the superintendent or briefings with the superintendent, providing updates every week to keep you in the know and stay in front of what's going on. I didn't want to take too much of your time. Mark, you want to say?
Yeah, I'm, good afternoon. Glad to be here. I'm fairly new at Advantage. My background is for 18 years, I was head of lobbying for the Virginia Municipal League. So my focus has been on local governments, pretty much my career since 1982, when I first became a county attorney, and I've been a county, city, or town attorney since then. So I'm really excited about working on your issues. It's, this is the stuff that I care about and so really look forward to working with the school board, with the superintendent, with the administration on the issues that we all face. It's, you know, it turns out, it's not a, it's not the worst year to be a school board. The state has a little money. There is a, an awareness, I've, we've seen it, right, of that there are needs that need to be met, that the state needs to meet. So, you know, everybody fights over every dollar every year, but at least there are some dollars to be fought over.
John, you want to say something?
Hi, I'm John Acaboon. I actually have a really strong background in communications. That's where my master's degree is. And I've also worked in Richmond with the House of Delegates and the state senators for five years. So I, I have real good relationships on both sides with, with the delegates and the legislators of every stripe. So, so I, I know them really well, can get in and see them whenever necessary and I'm looking forward to, to taking your concerns to them during the, the general assembly session which is coming up.
Mr. Chair, happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, I was going to ask Ms. Doyle if you had any comments you want to just make about the process or anything.
Sure. So, Mr. Jordan, do you want to share with us how you'll be, you said on a weekly basis, communicating with the superintendent, but in terms of how you'll be keeping us all abreast of what's happening, when it's happening, how it impacts Norfolk in particular and what is it we need to do in response?
We'll have two, we'll have two things that we are doing primarily. One is there will be a weekly conference call that will be in touch with the superintendent and working through Dr. Thornton to set up with the key staff and anyone else who you all decide you want to be on the call. It'll be a Friday afternoon call. It's, that's the time of the day that the general assembly, the one day of the week where the general assembly actually shuts up for the most part. And so we have a 30-minute call, start on time, end on hard stop on the half hour, in which we'll talk about the things that are the top priorities in your legislative package, bring you up to speed on what's going, what happened in the previous week on that and what's going to happen in the upcoming week and anything we need you to do. Any information we might need to help make the case or if we need help from you all by being there, we'll let you know at that time. In addition, the public education area has more pieces of legislation introduced than any other thing in the world. There are hundreds. And so we do a, we also, we're not going to spend our time in 30 minutes covering those because a lot of them won't affect you or they're lower priority for you. So we will provide you with a tracking list of those on a weekly basis also that we'll send to Dr. Thornton for distribution to the board with comments as needed on, on, on what's going on with those. A lot of them, you don't need, you know, you say, okay, oppose it, we don't like it, but you don't need to worry about it because it's not going to go anywhere. So, and we'll, we'll help you with that too. But those are two forms of communication that you'll be seeing or will be interacting with on a weekly basis. Then, of course, if something comes up that's a hot button issue, the nice thing about cell phones, we can always touch each other. So we'll be that way too.
And Advantage Strategies is well aware of our legislative priorities. They know what we're interested in and so that's why they know when to call us on the dime and/or if there's something that comes up. The other thing that is a benefit, and I think I'd like to introduce you to Jamie Fissner, who, for instance, oversees our Title I program as well as our Virginia preschool initiative. And so she's very interested in, in fact, the local criteria language that perhaps we would hope to see in the legislation this year. So those are the kinds of things where they would call upon Jamie Fissner to maybe have her answer some questions that relate to Norfolk in particular, or she might even go to Richmond, in fact, to testify if called upon. Or, you know, Chairman Jordan, they might ask you to come up to speak about charter schools and/or challenge schools. So that's where we have a great dialogue. The other opportunity of having Advantage in Richmond for us is if, Dr. Boone, if there's anything you feel, or Chairman Jordan, that we need to have communicated to our local delegation or to folks up there that we don't see daily, it's important that they become our voice in Richmond. So they tell our story. And so that's a very big advantage of having folks in Richmond that represent us.
In addition, if you all come up and need, and when, when you come up or if you come up, we're located literally at the foot of Capitol Square. So we can, you know, we can provide you a place to park, park yourselves, park your car, set up your laptop, do work while, in between general assembly meetings if you're up there for the day. So we look forward to working with you very much.
Go to Dr. Robinson.
I want to ask, what, what kind of collaboration do you do with the VSBA?
We work, we're part of a group and have been for a long time, affectionately referred to as the DUCs, but more formerly known as the Virginia Educational Liaisons, Legislative Liaisons. And the VSBA is a very integral part of that. Work very closely with their two lobbyists, Stacy Haney and Pat Lacy, and have on a number of issues, particularly money issues over the past several years. We meet with them every week. The Legislative Liaison is meet weekly on Thursdays and we're involved, which is, effectively, it's all the larger school divisions. Most of the smallest don't have anybody up there. But we collaborate on a lot of issues and that's a weekly thing.
And how about with the city of Norfolk's legislative assistant, Brian Pennington?
We know Brian very well and have worked with the city and have, actually have done work for the city on uranium.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Well, in fact, if I'm not mistaken, yesterday you had lunch with Brian Pennington, just that you two-
Mark had lunch with Brian yesterday to discuss collaboration.
Thank you.
All right. Dr. Gabriel?
Um, Ms.
Ms. Doyle, have they been able to come up to speed on the comprehensive regional high school, the need that we have for the technical high school and areas of interest that we would have with the legislative priorities and a budget for?
We could actually probably do a little bit more of a briefing on that one, but that's a good point.
Yeah, and actually, I was going to make two comments. One, Dr. Robinson mentioned VSBA. I did hear from them today, and so I think they're sending something to Janelle, to our clerk, to coordinate with you. And then the other piece of it is, as was mentioned earlier, I just want to confirm, so your ongoing interaction with us will flow through Dr. Boone and Dr. Thornton, and then you will interact and collaborate with us as needed. That is correct.
Correct, correct.
Yeah, and I would expect, I mean, we really haven't talked about this too formally yet because we're now just starting the relationship, but what I would envision is that Dr. Thornton and Dr. Boone would share with us probably on a weekly basis, based on the information they're receiving from Ron and team, what's happening in Richmond, and if not more frequently, because as we know, these 60 days pass in a minute. So we'll probably be kept abreast pretty tightly so that we're on top of what's happening there. And so I think, you know, we just need to frankly talk to Dr. Boone about how we want to make that correspondence with us, because I know, for instance, right now, Mr. Jordan, you had a quick analysis of the biennium budget of the governors, and you shared that with Dr. Thornton, who in turn shared that with all of us. So that was very helpful for us to get an impression of what's the first snapshot. So that's kind of how I maybe see it happening.
It was unvarnished, I guess you might say. It was pretty much told it like what I thought it was.
Right.
My point is just to make sure that as we engage with the staff and others that we are constantly going through the Superintendent Administration office so that we can make sure all of our resources are there.
Yes, it makes it easier for everyone to have one touch, and that's why we just go through Dr. Thornton and Dr. Boone.
All right, all right. Thank you so much. It's a pleasure meeting you. We look forward to working with you. And as Ms. Doyle said, we know that we will be up there with you, with VSBA, with PTA and others. And as you need us, we will work to make ourselves available to make sure we do what's best for our district. So thank you very much, and thank you, Ms. Doyle, and Dr. Thornton, and Dr. Boone and others for bringing this back for us. Think it's very important.
Thank you, and we're going to stick around and watch Dr. Thornton's presentation.
Well, he's not going to be next. He thought he was going to be next. What I'd like to do, I've heard from so many of you about our equity policy and comments and thoughts, and my sense is there's going to be a lot of input and conversation that we like to have. So I'd like to go to that now, and then we'll follow up with the other items after we get through that process. And so, Dr. Boone, I know that Dr. Bert Song has been working and been the administrative lead person with the Policy Committee, but I will turn to you first as part of this discussion of our equity policy draft as it stands today.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. And while we were referencing equity policy there, a couple of regulations and a couple of other policies on, in this list also. Very pleased to have Dr. Bert Song, who has taken the leadership role of making sure we've gotten to this point and working with the Policy Subcommittee. So turn it over to Dr. Bert Song.
Good afternoon, Mr. Jordan, Dr. Gabriel, members of the School Board, Dr. Boone again. As Dr. Boone stated, we have spent a great deal of time developing an equity policy for the school division. We are prepared this afternoon to present a draft to you. Dr. Boone will start with the philosophy relative to the development of the policy as well as the overarching purpose of having an equity policy for the school division, and then I will fill in with the operational pieces. So at this time, I will turn it over to Dr. Boone.
Thank you. You know, the philosophy and the purpose, obviously, the Board has been working on this for about five, six months prior to my arrival. And much of what we've already discussed today is exactly what this equity policy addresses. How do we know that students are learning? And for students who aren't learning, how do we support them? For schools that are making success, how do we continue to accelerate that success? And for schools that are not meeting with success, how do we support them? We talked about the condition of our facilities. We talked about what happens in the buildings. And how do we get the supports in place to ensure success? How do we, how are we intentional about addressing the issues that schools need in a manner which we're differentiating supports and opportunities? There's obviously a same base, a same floor, but beyond that, how do we differentiate, differentiate in order to meet the needs of a particular school or a set of students and others? I see the work in this policy as pretty much creating a way to codify that which the Board has already been undertaking through the adoption of policy, the support of regulations that go along with policy, the priorities and input that you give us into the budget process, the things that make a difference. And so for me, while bringing it together in a single policy gives it this level of focus, I think we can go back and catalog across this Board's history and other Boards the efforts to make sure that students are successful with everyone having the same floor. And what's needed beyond that is being specialized, whether it's for gifted learners, whether it's for students with disabilities, whether it's for a priority school or a school that's not on anybody's list but high performing. And so I see this, again, as a way of codifying our practices and making sure that it's that reminder to us that as we're making decisions, how do we vet those decisions against this policy for success?
Thank you, Dr. Boone. So again, just to give you some, a little bit of history behind the framework that we utilized for developing this policy, we utilized Roanoke Public Schools' framework as we worked to develop this policy. Roanoke Public Schools has had their policy in place for about six years, I believe. And so as we were working to develop this policy, we wanted to reach out to other school divisions that had already embarked upon this very important work. We even engaged the VSBA, and after having them conduct a survey throughout the Commonwealth, we quickly learned that Roanoke was the only other public school division that has an equity policy in place. So we certainly wanted to reach out to them and get some feedback from them.
In Virginia?
In Virginia. What did I say, in the United States?
Oh, you just said-
Just said only one.
Okay, in the Commonwealth. Let me make that very, very clear. We also intended to meet with Dr. Bishop during the VSBA conference, but our schedules didn't allow us to do that. But we were able to engage a variety of stakeholders in the process. We had teacher representatives, principal representatives. We had representatives from our teacher organizations, to include the NFT and the EAN. We engaged representatives from GAC and CAC, as well as the Norfolk Council of PTAs, as well as community members. We did reach out to them to participate in developing this policy. We had a variety of central office administrators engaged in the work. And certainly, we had members of the Norfolk Public Schools School Board, Policy Review Committee, who engaged in the work of getting this policy together. So please be mindful that equity is not the same as equality. I'm reminded of two pictures that we shared with you June 3rd during a previous work session about the difference between equity and equality. The first picture was a picture of three students, and they were trying to watch a baseball game. They were all standing on a wooden box. The wooden box was the same height for all of the students. However, we had a very tall student who could see over the fence without the box. We had a medium-height student who could see only because he was standing on the box. And then we had a very, very short student, or vertically challenged student, who could not, and I can relate, who could not see over the fence. So although we provided those same, all of the students with the same boxes, clearly, the third child could not engage actively with the baseball game. So that picture kind of symbolized equality. When you think about equity, we kind of changed up the boxes a little bit. The tallest student certainly didn't need the box to stand on, and so I think that graphic showed that. Then we had the middle-sized student, again, he needed that box to be able to look over the fence and watch the baseball game. And the third student, the student that was vertically challenged or short, he was given two boxes to look over the fence because he needed that in order to see. So as we engaged in developing this policy, we kept that in mind. And so we knew that it would be important for our purposes to define educational equity. It is defined as fostering a barrier-free environment whereby all students, regardless of their background, have the opportunity to benefit from the establishment of high standards and the provision of support, effective learning environments, and resources for a high-quality education. So for the purposes of this policy, that's how we will define equity. The School Board and the administration, they, we recognize that there are host of factors that should be considered to ensure that all students are able to achieve at high levels. So we looked at or considered high expectations for all students, and we've mentioned this time and time again, there's not a School Board meeting, I don't think, that we've not had, that we have not discussed the quality and effectiveness and stability of school leadership. That is just a common theme that we're always discussing, as well as the quality and retention of effective teachers. We also need to consider the allocation of differentiated resources, as mentioned by Dr. Boone. We need to look at human resources, as well as fiscal, operational, and structural resources, as well as classroom environments with students from diverse backgrounds. And so by considering all these factors, the School Board and the administration, we will demonstrate a commitment to equitable opportunities for all of our students. And as stated by Dr. Boone, it's going to be intentional. We're not going to leave anything to chance. All of our actions will be intentional around this policy. So on an annual basis, the School Board will establish goals, just as you do every year, to promote the equitable distribution of the school division's resources. So as you think about this, we have noted some goals that we want the School Board to consider. Those goals include ensuring that student enrollment does not exceed school capacity. We want all of our teachers to be highly qualified, and certainly we know that is an existing goal, and we're very close to 100% with that right now. We will also strive to establish and maintain an equitable distribution of teacher experience within each school. That's another subject that we discuss almost, at almost every School Board meeting. We certainly cannot, we cannot determine which teachers leave our school division. Certainly, there are some things that we can support or put supports in places so that we keep teachers. But when teachers leave, as an administration, we need to look at the teachers that decide to stay. And as teachers transfer into different buildings and as Human Resources works with the Department of Curriculum and Instruction, Teaching and Learning to place teachers, we need to look at experience level. But as Dr. Thornton would always eloquently point out, experience does not always equate to effectiveness. So we need to keep all of those variables in mind. All right. So two other goals that I didn't mention, and we, again, we talk about this, and Mrs. Doyle pointed out this today, about looking at facilities and needs. And so we want to establish as a goal that mobile units for classrooms will be temporary and limited. And also, we want to follow state standards as it relates to the construction and renovation of facilities. And the administration will come together and establish some local criteria for that as well. So on an annual basis, the administration will measure critical factors that impact students' overall academic achievement. Again, we talked about key performance indicators today. Most of the data related to these factors, we look at these things on a continuous basis. But again, our efforts will be very intentional. So the factors that we will be evaluating or measuring include access to educational opportunities. We're going to be looking at disaggregated student data to include achievement data, student enrollment data, as well as suspension, student suspension and discipline data. And so we're going to be looking at the data disaggregated by race, ethnicity, socioeconomic status, ELL, or English Language Learners, special education population, as well as our gifted learners. We're also going to measure the federal funding, as well as the non-federal funding that's allocated for each school. I'm not going to read the next two slides to you. You can look at the slides, but those are some other key measures that we're going to look at. And again, we've discussed some of these measures time and time again, whether it be highly qualified teachers at school, the experience levels of teachers, the teacher retention rates at each school. We're going to look at the Facilities Condition Index. That's what our school plant members will be looking at as we evaluate the safety of each school and putting things in place or making, developing plans so that we can address critical needs. We're going to be looking at mobile units, the placement of mobile units. And one very, very important piece that Dr. Robinson mentioned today was the extent of family and community engagement. And I think all of you were at the VSBA conference this summer when we were able to speak with Dr. Constantino, who is the superintendent with James, Williamsburg, James City County. And so he gave a very good presentation about the importance of engaging family and community into schools and how that has such a positive, positive impact on student achievement. And certainly, these measures, measurements will help us to assess the development of budgets, capital improvement plans, and certainly, it will give us an opportunity to look at the strategies that we are implementing as a School Board and an administration. So on, at least an annual basis, the Superintendent and the administration will provide a report to the School Board, and this will be the Equity Report. And it will have within it major components of the things that we're going to be looking at and measuring. For example, the student achievement data. And again, this is nothing new because this is data that you get every year. But again, our efforts will be very intentional. We're going to be looking at student enrollment data, suspension discipline data, and again, funding, whether it be federal or non-federal funding, teacher retention rates, as well as the number and percentage of highly qualified teachers at each school. And again, as we look at this, at these data, this information will be used for the next year's planning, whether it be, you know, to add additional teachers, personnel, resources at one school. We will look at all of the data to make very, very informed decisions about how we will be moving forward to the next year. So what the School Board will have to do is they will have to establish a task force to assist Dr. Boone with developing the Equity Plan. So the major responsibilities of this task force would be to serve as an advisory committee to the Superintendent and to advise her on equity issues, as well as assist her in developing strategies, again, for ensuring equitable educational opportunities for all of our children. So as we engaged in the discussion about who should serve on the task force, we thought initially that it should be a small group of individuals, but by the time we finished and we went, you know, to various stakeholder groups, we ended up with a total of 19 members on the task force. And it's a very diverse group of members to include one central office administrator, three base, three school-based administrators, one at each level, elementary, middle, and high school, three teachers, again, at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. Of course, we would have representation from our teacher organizations, from GAC and CAC, as well as the Norfolk Council of PTAs. And what was also discussed today, I think Dr. Boone talked about having a student representative as it relates to like a Superintendent's Cabinet. But the School Board, in fact, that's one of the policies that we're going to be looking at today, will have- will have students working with them as well. So we wanted to have the student school board representative to work with the Equity Task Force, as well as a citizen of Norfolk, a business community representative, an urban studies expert, an ELL representative, a Title I representative. And because we're going to be also looking at student discipline data, we would like to have a representative from the Department of Student Support Services. Finally, some other pertinent information you might want to know about the terms of membership and just about the Equity Task Force. Each of the members would serve a two-year term, with the exception of the student member. And because the student may end up being a senior in high school, of course, we couldn't commit that student the next year. Or, you know, just keeping their attention from two, for two years might be a little challenging. So the student will have a term of one year, all other members will have a term of two years. The meetings of Equity Task Force, they will be meeting on at least a quarterly basis with Dr. Boone and the administration, just to discuss equity issues, to assist, again, with the developing the Equity Plan, and to, again, provide counsel to her as it relates to any equity issues that we may be facing in the school division. So with that said, in a nutshell, that are, those include the operational pieces of the policy, and we are certainly prepared to answer any questions that you have.
I'm going to open the floor, but just a couple of things I wanted to add from the perspective of, you know, Reverend Haywood and I have been serving on the Policy Committee that the Board agreed to create 2014. And I went back and just pulled up the original presentation when Dr. Birdsong, Ms. Banks, Attorney Cloud, Reverend Haywood and I first presented to the Board how we would try to operate as a, as a Policy Committee. And part of that, there was a chart that we had pulled from what school boards can, can do. And we just acknowledged in that that there would be times that task forces may be created in order to support the work of the Board and support the work of the superintendents. I just wanted to kind of tie that back to the Task Force recommendation here. The other thing associated with Roanoke, when we were working with the Schools in Challenging Environments Task Force, you already may recall, we had the forum in Richmond on best practices. And so, Roanoke was one of the presenters there. I don't know how many folks had an opportunity to see their presentation there, but they also presented at the National School Boards Association Conference back in Nashville. And also, Ms. Wagner and Reverend Haywood and I also had the opportunity to sit in, to sit on their presentation that they did at Cube Summer Seminar in Savannah. And then some of us are also scheduled to attend the Equity Symposium that National School Board Association is doing later this month. Also, if you go back and look at our strategic plan, some of the recommendations built into that also dealt with equity. And then finally, in our MOU agreement that we have with B D O E, we said we would pursue the development of a Equity Policy. So I just wanted to kind of connect the dots in terms of how we got here and what we've been working on and why it has taken time to try to make sure that we looked at best practices and have the administration really go and look at what makes sense for Norfolk. So, I say all that to say that many of you have called and emailed and had thoughts and suggestions. And so first, I'd just like to see if Dr. Boone has anything else she would like to add. If not, then I'm just going to, you know, open up the floor and go around. I would just encourage staff present to take out your notebooks because I know that there are plenty of thoughts that board members have about the policy as it exists today as a draft, and perhaps some recommendations for modifying it to the point where we can have consensus around adoption. So, Dr. Boone, do you have anything else you wanted to?
No, I don't have anything else to add. I'm looking forward to the discussion.
Alright, let's start tomorrow. Ms. Basine?
Okay, I have several comments related to this. And first, I just want to say that I think of all of our policies, this one is perhaps one of the most important policies that we can put through, that we can work to develop and put through. As it addresses the academic, socio-emotional, and even from a health standpoint, it really, the whole child rests on this policy. So, I commend the previous board, the current board, and administration for getting this conversation started. Having said that, I appreciate the alignment with the strategic plan, as Mr. Jordan just said. Having worked on that strategic planning process, I know equity was a big piece of that, of one of our strategies. But what, in looking at this policy, some things that I would like to see improved, and I'm just going to walk through and go through it. In the purpose, you know, we have our mission statement of being the cornerstone of a proudly diverse community. And I won't read the whole mission statement. But I think that our purpose has to explicitly state what the problem is. And it's the elephant in the room, frankly, that we have achievement and opportunity gaps that are rooted in institutional racism and biases. And I think we need to explicitly state that in here as to why we are putting this policy in place. And what give the, provide the historical context of why we are in this place. It's not because our district has put the students in this place. It is based on the history of how we got here. And I think it's not the children's fault, it's not anyone's fault, but we, as the adults, have to now put this in place to ensure that we eliminate the biases that are perpetuating the widening achievement gaps and, and opportunity gaps. Because we, as we saw today, or not today, but as we've seen this year and years and years before, we keep seeing our, our, our white students far ahead from our African-American, Hispanic, socio-economically disadvantaged. And I think we need to hone in and say that in here, that that is what we're going to address in this policy. Having said that, going forward into the goals, I think our goals have to be very explicit about what it is we're doing. I, currently, our goals are, even as, as you mentioned, Dr. Birdsong, in your presentation just prior to this, is that there's, you know, most of what's in here is, is everything that we're doing. And everything that we're doing is, you know, is not closing that achievement gap. So we have to go beyond that and be, as you said, intentional. And I believe that there is intentionality there, but that intentionality is not currently reflected in this policy. So I would like to see specifics as to what we are going to do in terms of being intentional in our goal setting and in the way we measure those goals. Let's see.
Do you, excuse me, but do you have like a, for example?
Okay, for example, how we say we're going to hire highly effective and quali- high-quality teachers. That's something we've been talking about forever now. What do, what do we mean by that? Are we, how will our hiring practices be intentional in that we are having culturally competent teachers, leaders put in place? Ones that reflect the diversity of the school population? I would like to see specifics of that nature put into our goals. In terms of our hiring practices, in terms of our curriculum and instruction, in terms of our parent and community outreach, how are we going, what are we going to do different that is intentional about bringing attention to the diversity of our school population? We said in our beliefs, when we developed and approved the strategic plan, that diversity is the strength of this district. And we need to build and foster that diversity and show that in, in all realms of how we educate our students. For, the other, another example is offering professional development opportunities to improve staff cultural competency. Increase the workforce capacity individually and collectively to teach racially, ethnically, and socio-demographically diverse students. So I think we need to be, you know, point that out clearly in our, in our goals. So that's just one example. Partnerships, we need to have partnerships with, and relationships with organizations that have specific expertise in working with diverse groups of people. And we need to involve families, organizations, and community centers in the higher education as well. And so those are just some, some things. And how we're going to offer multiple pathways for students is also something that we've talked about in the strategic plan. We've talked about it as we start discussing and planning the C T E. But we need to be very explicit in here as to what we are going to do. Because currently, what's in here is what we're already doing. So I, as you said, that being intentional going forward, I would like to see our goals explicitly say how we're going to do that. Let me see. I think it's great having this Equity Task Force and having an annual Equity Report because that will allow us to measure then how this policy is impacting other policies. Because I do think this is the crux of, of how we reduce those, those gaps that we're currently seeing. So I, I have a series, series of comments that I made. I took, and I can share that with you and send that to you if you would like, rather than taking up
Yeah, think of the end.
The whole thing, you know, right now. But I just wanted to give you an overview of what my concerns are.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Dr. Gabriel?
Well, Dr. Birdsong, when you described the picture, I have the picture.
Yes.
And I think that, I think that a picture is worth a thousand words. And when you look at the picture, what parent wouldn't want this for their child? Whether they're the tall child, the middle child, or the short child? And that's what it all comes down to. We want the best for our children. And I think that this policy is speaking to us finally, trying to put in words what we've been trying to do for
So as we engage in the discussion about who should serve.
That's me.
That was you previously, live.
I recognize our voice.
Excuse me. Either way, I, I think it's, I think it speaks to what we are trying to do in the best interest of children. I do have a couple of comments and some questions that I jotted down about the policy. And since we're in draft form, I, I would like to go ahead and, and bounce these ideas off of everyone else while we're all here. So the first question that I have is, when the Stakeholder Committee met, what was the representation by teachers and what were the comments that they had regarding the policy?
We had, again, teachers at all three levels. We had a member of GAC, CAC. We had just about every person that I, individual that I listed initially. It was a, a pretty large group of stakeholders. We had Norfolk Council of PTA, of course, we had central administrators, we had principals there. We had teachers there. Our Executive Directors of Schools actually helped me to facilitate the groups. They were very, very excited about the policy, and they actually had a chance to provide input. So, they met together as groups, we broke out, I gave them a charge, we came back together. Each group reported out. And then each group got together afterwards, or, you know, whether it was together or electronically, and they provided their feedback to us, and then we incorporated the feedback into the policy.
Were there any specific comments made by teachers regarding distributing the experience level of teachers?
I don't recall that specifically with this group, but I do recall talking with administrators and other teachers making comments about that. I can recall a comment a teacher made about, actually was an administrator, about moving teachers from one building into another building because of their experience level. And, you know, while, again, we embrace having experience, a variety of experiences within a building, we also had to explain that you wouldn't want to place teachers where they are not, where they don't want to be. So whatever strategies we put in place is going to be, it's going to have to certainly be a collaborative process wherein we would not force people to be transferred from one school to the next. So, so yes, so people have had discussions about that, but I don't remember specifically from that particular group that comments were made around that.
Okay, and that's, that's really what I wanted to make sure of because our teachers are professionals.
Right.
And they, they have gone into this field because they have a desire to, to educate children. And I think that unfortunately, there are stereotypes with certain conditions.
Right.
And sometimes that might, you know, transpose negatively on a teacher's impression.
Right.
But I want us to be very compassionate, and you said that you all are taking that into consideration. I want us to be compassionate towards what their desires are because we want them to be happy in their workplace.
Absolutely.
But at the same time, you know, even in, in the world of medicine and phys- and pediatrics, we give our doctors incentives to go teach in certain areas. And we become better providers because of that experience. And I think that if you talk to different teachers and they tell you, you know, "I've had experienced teaching in X environment, it's made me a better person, I felt more rewarded about that." I think that that can go a long way. But I just want us to make sure that when we discuss it intentionally in the policy, that we are compassionate to what our professional teachers are, what their feelings are, and how they feel that they can provide the best type of education in the environment that they're in. So I, I just really wanted to make sure that we focused on that. And I did, I did comment on the, under the goal section, Part B, "All teachers at each school will be highly qualified." Yes, let's please define that. Let's put some meaning to what we mean by highly qualified. If you're going to be in elementary math, these are the certificates that you need to have in order to do that, you know, so.
I do believe, and correct me if I'm, I'm wrong, within the policy, we said as defined by the Department, the Virginia Department of Education.
Okay, okay. And I'll have to go back and review that. The next question that I had, under Part E, under the goals, "The school division will encourage having an active PTA association at each school." I think, I think PTA has meaning at some schools, and it has a different meaning at others. And while certain schools can thrive with what, with what some might think of as a traditional PTA, I think that we have to break some common stereotypes and look at it differently for other schools. Because not every parent or guardian will be able to participate at a certain level. So I think that I would like for us to kind of also define what we mean by parent, teacher, and student engagement, and what that means. Because as we learned by, by our seminar that we attended in Williamsburg, you know, what is parent engagement? Well, your, your child is fed, they're on, they're at school on time, they're dressed, you know, they're ready to, they've slept the night before. And so, parent engagement has many different meanings. So I would like for us to talk a little bit more about what we mean by that because I think that is critical. We cannot do the heavy lifting all by ourselves. We need the support of our parents. And sometimes our parents need to know what they can do to help. Even if it means having the textbooks at home, there are so many different ways that we can, we can go about this. But I think that this is a good, a good step to explicitly point this out.
And I think you're right, it can't be a cookie cutter approach. It needs to be differentiated based upon the individual school.
Right. Even, even to the point of how the information is distributed. Some schools, it might work better for email, and other schools, it might be a posting at the rec center. I mean, it just, we just have to find out what works best for each of our environments and build upon those best practices. On the Annual Equity Report, under Section B, student, where it talks about the, the superintendent shall provide a report once a year during the school board business meeting. My question was, under Section B, when it, I'm sorry, C, it referenced student suspension and discipline data for each school and the student average daily attendance. When we talk about suspensions, we used to have in-school suspension, long-term suspension, short-term suspension. Are we going to go into that, or is that just going to be broad?
So look, then, since we talk about this, you know, we're at the, the policy level. And we know that what the policy is addressing is a, is a task force. Doesn't speak to it, but, you know, there's an equity audit. I'll talk about that later in terms of a task audit that the district has done. So I just think we have to be careful to not try to prescribe the policy so much.
Okay.
That it, you know, ultimately, there are going to be some regulations that the administration will bring forward. There's going to be work that the task force will do. And what they've done in, in Roanoke over time, this has evolved. So what their policy may have looked like in 2009 and what it looks like in 2015 has changed. I think Dr. Boone mentioned it earlier. You know, you get a set of data, you have to be able to, to adjust. I don't, I don't, I think it's important, as we say, that school boards governed by policy, that we not see this as some rigid document that exists today, and therefore, we have to make sure that we account for every single solitary thing today. We need to get out there, I think, being able to say this is something that we support, and then allow the, an audit to take place. Because there may even be some assumptions that we have around disparities and, and equity that may not be there. We know, obviously, we see them from some of the reports that we have. But when they get the opportunity to even go through and assess some of these things, once we agree as a team what those are, there'll be data that will come back to us. And that's what, I don't know if you all have the scorecard, but if you look at that Roanoke scorecard you can bring up, that's what allows for the board, the administration, the public to see these issues or gaps, as Ms. Basine was mentioning. And it just helps to guide our, our work. So I would just caution us not to get too prescriptive. But at the same time, I, I think it's important that the items that we're bringing forward.
Well, I'll just close with this, that I think that this, this report, this, this policy is directly, as you had mentioned before, directly comes from the vision of the big group of stakeholders that came together when Dr. King first arrived. You know, what do we want for Norfolk Public Schools? And I think that this is, is a direct result of what that was. And I think it speaks to our vision. So I think that it totally coincides with, with the mission, the vision, and what we feel is representative of a cornerstone of a proudly diverse community.
Others before I come back.
I'll go after Ms. Wagner.
Okay. I just have a couple of maybe suggestions. And to piggyback what was said already, I'm back to highly qualified. And I know you referred to the Virginia Department of Education. And this, there's this, I think, kind of vague going along with the No Child Left Behind. It basically states that it has to be licensed, and of course
Their content area.
And that, and that's pretty much it. So I think if we're going to look at defining our equity policy, let's really define highly qualified as it relates to the equity policy. What is it we're looking for in terms of a highly qualified personnel and its relationship to equity for Norfolk Public Schools? The other piece in terms of the parent, teacher, PTA, I, I have to really piggyback again, Noel. There's, there's, it's disjointed. And maybe it has to be some kind of consistency in terms of how many, even in terms of how many times we should meet, define it more. You know, what, what, what are we looking for in Norfolk Public Schools in terms of a successful parent, teacher conference? Twice a year, three times a year, four times a, or what? What are our goals there? Because it really is disjointed around the system. The other thing was the measurability of, of your goals. And maybe, and this is just, you know, I'm looking at that, it's just, it's kind of vague. And maybe with a nineteen-person committee, that we can probably define more, you know, how we are going to measure the success of this equi, the equity policy. And I'd like to see kind of a comparative piece. You know, what did it look like in 2014, 15, before we had it? And what, and, and maybe six to twelve months down the role, down the road? You know, what, what are we looking like since we've put this policy in place? I think in terms of when we do the presentation, more of an analysis to see where we, how we're, how it's working.
Ms. Doyle?
Sure. So I think I have a few just comments in general and then questions. And I'm not going to quite get into the details of language, because I know that that's for another day. Dr. Boone, it's interesting, because I think what you said encapsulated it well in the very beginning, that this codifies what we frankly are already doing. So I think we do have to ask ourselves, do we, and I'm just asking this, do we need a separate policy to be doing, to codify what we should already be doing? I'm just asking the question, just putting it out there. Because as, as you read much of this, I feel like it's in, it's a part of other documents and/or other efforts and so on. So I just raised the question. I'm not saying yes, no. Secondly, it concerns me, if we put any policy in place, well, it, it concerns me that we have to go into the implementation of any policy, knowing that we can afford it. So the idea is, if we can't afford some of the things we want to do now, how is this policy going to make affordability different in the future? And so what we need to do is, what is this going to cost us? And it shouldn't be shifting of resources. It should be an additive piece. So how much more is this going to cost us to do? Can we quantify that? And where are we going to get the revenue so that we can actually employ, or deploy, or implement a policy? I think that's just important, that we be mindful that we don't want to put together any kind of policy that perhaps the division can't afford. I think it would be important to, to look at what the regulation would look like, even in advance of finalizing what this policy would look like. And I don't know how much that takes, and I'm just saying that out there.
Respectfully, I got to push back on that piece. For us to develop a regulation for a policy that may not fly is a lot of staff time that we could be using doing something else. The direction for, for myself and my team is driven by the adoption of a policy. Boards review regulations, they adopt policy. And so if the regulation becomes the driver for this, then we're doing just the opposite. And, and if I can comment on, on, on your, your initial comment about why we need to codify what we're doing, today's composition of the board and its belief system represents today's composition and its belief system. If this is something that's important to the board, and as I've heard through the earlier strategic planning process, was something that was fully identified by the community as a focus that this board would need to have, then I would say that's the why. Because it then becomes subject to whatever when new board members are on. It also, and every policy is at that place. But again, because this isn't a policy, as I'm listening to this conversation and have done, and learned the earlier history of how we've gotten to this, to this discussion, this wasn't something that necessarily came as a board initiative, but it was something that emerged through community conversations. And in being responsive to a, the, the larger community's issues and concerns, I see this as being a way that the board is showing, we hear you. The affordability piece will always be an issue. And as we went earlier, we're not, we're going to continue to discuss CIP, even though we know we can't pay for it. So I would apply that same analysis to the equity policy, is that we aren't doing it because we can afford it. We're doing it because it's the right thing. And I agree with you. We shouldn't be taking funds from something else to make it happen. It gives us a way of really defining what our needs are, based on a set of metrics around where gaps exist and gaps that we need to close if we intend to have a successful district. So those are just some of my initial thoughts, you know, to, to what you were saying.
Okay. The other thing in general, I know there's a few more people that want to comment. And I know many of folks on the board, I haven't had the opportunity to see the Roanoke folks, but have, and I see that that's their equity scorecard. But have we learned from them what the success was of this policy since its implementation and ongoing? Because this is just really one year's time. And it's showing a few data back. But if we asked them long-term how it's been, they've, they've had it six years or so, you've mentioned.
I can't recall if what's loaded on board docs right now includes their presentation. But what presentation that they have been giving, that they tied the policy to the closing of gaps that Ms. Basine mentioned earlier. So it's not the policy in and of itself, no more than, as we talked about, the strategic plan that, that's done in isolation. This is just one piece. And so what they were able to do is by first adopting the policy, bringing the community together through the task force, doing equity audits and identifying where they did have these, these gaps or inequities, and then strategically tying their policies, their actions, their budgets, and everything else towards, toward those efforts. That's where they were able to demonstrate the, the closing of gaps and the successes that they were, that they were having. So not just Roanoke. We, we used Roanoke because they were the only ones in Virginia. But as I mentioned earlier, I know when I went out to the Great City Schools Conference in New Mexico, St. Paul's, Minnesota, I think it is, Twin Cities, their district has been using it. As a matter of fact, I think their scorecards that they use, they actually got from, you know, Dr. Bailey and the staff here in terms of how they were able to look at this. And I think that if you go back and look at some success that we had here as a district as we began to close gaps, it was that willingness to be able to have those courageous conversations and start to look at some, some of these issues. So sure, yes, they've been able to demonstrate results as a part of that. But we know with any of the policies that we have, at the end of the day, it's going to come down to, you know, our willingness as a team to implement and do the types of things that we've talked about, and allowing the, the data to inform the decisions that, that we make. So yes, I don't, I can't remember if that's there, but if not, I will refer the presentation that they gave, because I know we've, I've shared it a couple of times.
And then the last thing is, quite often, we have the opportunity of these policies to come before us. We ask for community input. When they have this much of a significant impact on a division, we do ask for community input. And I know while there was community input to develop this, these are now words on a page. And so I think that it would be important that before we come to a vote and before we move way down the road, that we do get community input, just like we did. What was the policy that we got? It was on the
The assault.
Right, exactly.
Unprovoked assaults on staff.
Right. So that was a good practice, I think, that we put in place as part of the policy review and policy implementation and policy development opportunity. And so I just think that's important, that we also do that in this case as well. And I have other, you know, language things, but those are just kind of my global questions that I wanted to throw out there, that I know this is going to, you know, be a multi-discussion conversation. This is not going to finish tonight. You know, it's going to take a while for this to, to work its way through the process.
Others? Dr. Robson?
Whenever anything like this comes up, I always think about unintended consequences. And, and the question I have is, under this policy, will baseline dollars be shifted to, from one school to another to raise the student, teacher ratio in one school, so we can lower the student, teacher ratio in another? That's a question. Would this policy allowed that to happen?
I, I think that's one way to interpret it. And it is, okay, who do we take money from in order to do this? That's why I characterize it that there's a core foundation. It's interesting when the conversation shifts from who loses, rather than the conversation being about who gains when we add in things such as Title I funding, or supplementals, funding for students with disabilities, or the limited supplemental funding for gifted students. We seldom ask the question about who's receiving. We tend to flip the question as who's losing. And so I will want to reframe the question closer, more closely aligned with Mrs. Doyle's question about how do we affect the, the equity pieces, the added-on pieces? And so in, in the presentation that Dr. Birdsong did, she talked about how do we map out federal and non-federal dollars? Because those are already in place. But what we can do, and it's not taken away from anybody, how are we currently using those dollars? Have we just done them in a, in a routine manner, and they are not really pushing on results? Can we reuse, reprogram those dollars, those same dollars, to get greater effectiveness? And it's still part of this, this equity piece. It, once we get beyond, get deeply into the funding conversation, that's going to be the frame that we will use every year for budget development. Are we, in terms of the annual metrics, are we taking actions that begin to close some, a well-identified gap in terms of success? And success, again, shouldn't just be about students in schools that are underperforming. Success is also about our achieving students. You know, I, I mentioned earlier, I went to the IB graduation yesterday, and we are talking about a pipeline with a middle-years program at the Academy for Discovery Learning. We are talking about the potential for a primary-years program. Well, the current structure of that program addresses about sixty-five students. We, this becomes an equity conversation. We are building a pipeline. How do we support the pipeline once it gets to the high school level? So that, too, is about equity. It's, you know, we, we, when we build in these programs, we set an expectation for parents that that will be available for me in order to get there. So I think the funding piece goes, goes on both sides of that equation.
And just to add, I'm sorry, Reverend Haywood?
Yeah, I just wanted to address what Dr. Robinson had just stated. If you recall, back in 2012, at Taylor Elementary, the administration made the decision to move a couple of teachers because there was a need in other elementary schools. And the number of teachers that Taylor had exceeded the, the numbers that by law they needed to have. So they moved those teachers. And as you recall, there was quite a bit of controversy around that. I, along with four other school board members, went over to Taylor and met with the folks there. But the end result was, those teachers were moved, and, and that, that was a big uproar. What an equity policy helps to do is to identify just that kind of thing. And in this case, this was the moving of resources that were dictated by, just, just by the numbers, by
By the enrollment, the student enrollment.
Yeah, by, by the numbers, by the enrollment. So I, I, I think that this type of policy will help clarify these, these types of inequities. Because there are inequities in our system. And, and so I think that there is great potential for this policy to help us in this area. Thank you.
And just to add to that, I don't think the policy is forcing a board action. I mean, it's not, it's, we're not handcuffing anyone. I think, you know, part of what I envision us talking about is, you know, it's almost like we're talking about, this is the defined set as we know it today. And now immediately, the conversation's around, well, how do we redistribute the defined set? You know, an article appeared in the newspaper, I guess it was yesterday. You know, email came in from supportive partners who said, what can we do to help? And they wanted to immediately say, well, you know, can we fundraise? Can we bring support to try to address the inequity? So I think being able to have the conversation, again, this is not something that we adopted on January twentieth. Then on January twenty-first, all of a sudden, you start seeing these shifts. We have a superintendent that's going to be managing the process. We have the task force. We have the community input and so forth. But it's not as though it is handcuffing the board. What it is, is taking these things that we've talked about. I mean, as was said earlier, we talk about it every month. You know, why is it that one school is struggling with this and another school is not? Or why is it that one school has this level of experience, effectiveness, however you define it, and another school does not? And then we will turn to Dr. Birdsong, or we'll turn to Dr. Thornton, the superintendent, and we'll say, we'll do something about it. All the policy helps to do is to codify that the board is indeed, indeed wants to do something about it. And as we talk about budget goals, and as we talk about prioritizing, it just gives us a framework for doing that, and gives us a picture to say how we are doing. it just gives us a framework for doing that and gives us a picture to say how we are doing against these things that we talked about. So I know it's a courageous conversation, and right now we're reading courageous conversations and we're talking about it. And so I agree with Dr. Boone, I think, in as much as we may see this around what is somebody losing, I think what we're really saying is, how does the entire system gain and move forward and have the type of success that we've, at least I've heard us talk about that we want to have? Anyone else have? So I just wanted to share one other piece of this in terms of the conversation. So this was, forgive all my papers in it because it's been sitting on my shelf for fifteen years. This was an equity audit that the school board did authorize to be done back in two thousand, two thousand and one. And part of what they were just looking at at the time, it was just at an elementary school level. And they were trying to compare, looking at equities that existed between what we used to call the community schools. These were the elementary schools that were high poverty, high minority versus the non-scholes that were not in that category. And they went through and they did an equity audit, and they found all these inequities. And the board had a discussion on it, and they ended up not acting upon it because the question came up, well, what does this do around funding? But if you look at what those schools were that were deemed to be on the negative side of the ledger, they are the same schools that we have in priority and focus today thirty years later. So I just think what this gives us an opportunity to do as we continue to do our work is to just set the foundation for boards that will follow us to make sure that we don't find ourselves, they don't find themselves thirty years later, still trying to deal with these same issues because, you know, for whatever reason, they couldn't find the will at that time to act. And so I think this is an opportunity for us, based upon all the things that we've talked about, to just begin to lay that framework, and we can pace it at whatever level we need to pace it. But I think being able to start with the policy as we've talked about and said we would do, get the, get an audit done, get a task force in place, and have that information inform our decision is really just that first step. And for me, and I think as we've talked about it from a committee, you know, we knew, you know, it's one thing to be able to talk about courageous conversations and policies. It's another thing when decisions start getting made. And so we were trying to frame it in a way, and I think I mentioned earlier, you know, Row Note did this over a series of time, and we recognize it's going to be over time. But this is an opportunity for us to start that process. Well, from a process standpoint, I know that many of you did, like I did, went in and drafted and started to make comments. So from a process standpoint, what I would recommend we do is share your comments back to Dr. Birdsong, Dr. Boone, copy the full board, and then, you know, we can work together to incorporate that into some type of shared document or some next version to get back to the board for, to see if we have adequately addressed your input. And then Dr. Boone, part of what we did when we were, because we actually slowed down the timeline. I don't know if you already called or not, but our goal was to adopt the policy, I think it was originally October, maybe September, sometime in that timeframe. And because we're in transition, we said we would wait. And so-
I thank you.
You're so welcome. But one of the things we did at our last policy committee meeting, and part of what was the back and forth we were going through, you know, we met, we provided some comments, we sent it back to the administration, they gave some comments, and we sent it back. And finally, we just asked Dr. Boone if she would come in and sit in on the meeting and share her thoughts. And so I just want to, you know, offer Dr. Boone any closing remarks in terms of, as you were sharing with the committee at the time, the philosophy around the board and setting the policy and the administration on the implementation side, as you kind of shared with us in trying to make sure that we were bold in what we were doing, but that we also were legal and appropriate so that we addressed all these various issues that I think also have come up in this discussion.
I can't thank the board enough for the candor and the comments and the questions in this period of discussion of this policy. It does a number of things. One, it helps me understand exactly the thinking of the board and where we are with our work. But it also serves to validate some of the point, counterpoint questions we've had within Cabinet and others as we've looked at a version to present to the board in order to have this level of discussion. And so we heard things that we raised, you know, thinking through the policy. Does it do this? Does it do that? And I hear today even some of the challenges and struggles that we had with aspects of the policy and how do we get it moving forward. But I do think it is a good direction to go as a superintendent. As I, you know, should this policy be adopted? As superintendent, when I come to the board with certain recommendations or certain information about actions that I need to take, it's less of the justifying of why we're doing it because of the discussions we've had around this policy and becomes more of, okay, how do we make it happen? What will be the results? And I particularly appreciate the questions around, how do we know that what we're doing will make a difference? How do we stay on top of it? Because it's easy to put labels on schools or programs or adopt a policy and say, as adults, we're done, we're happy, you know, we've done this. It's really productive and really forward-thinking when we begin to say, but how do we know it's making a difference? And where do we make adjustments if those are necessary in order to make sure that if adopted, it's truly an effective policy? So the conversation tonight, you saw me, I always take a lot of notes, but I took a lot of notes on this particular piece because, again, this is something, if it moves to full adoption, that will continue to frame. It's not a new framing. And I think that's what makes the conversation ripe for this community, for this board, is that it's not a new conversation, but we are now ripe to have this conversation and take some action that will help us begin to break the codes. You know, and I was sitting there listening to Mr. Jordan and talk about an audit from two thousand, two thousand and one, and then hear the reference that those are community schools that are still struggling. That gave me chills. It literally did because I was like, wow. We've got to figure out a different way of doing business. And it's not just about the equity policy, but it's about how do we do business differently to get some different results? And I believe we have the will here at this table tonight and going forward to make it happen.
All right, we have a few other policies, at least a couple of regulations that we can close out, and then we'll finish up with a robust discussion, beginning with Dr. Thornton's update for us on the budget. So, I'm sorry, sir.
I have a request. If we're going to be discussing these policies, I think we should get them before the meeting.
I agree.
Yeah.
We, I thought it had been posted and we put it up, but not a problem.
Okay, you're right. And as I was going to close with that, because Dr. Boone and I had a conversation. She, I wanted her to share with the board some thoughts she had around the timing of her cabinet meetings and our work sessions, but absolutely, you're correct. And normally, we would do that, you know, it goes to the policy committee, we post it and so forth. We had pulled it back, and then we just got caught with the holidays, but you're absolutely correct.
So we have three other policies. We have BB, or two regulations actually in one policy. The regulation for the student representative to the school board, a review of the selection process, and Mr. John Coleman, who is the executive director of secondary schools, he took the lead on that. Are there any questions relative to that regulation?
And if I may, Chairman Jordan, just say, I like the idea of having student voice at this table. And so I want to thank Mr. Coleman and Dr. Birdsong for the work that has been done to recommend a process for selecting that student and then how that student will interact going forward.
And just as a reminder, this is something that this board and half this board and half the previous board said that we wanted to do as part of more engagement, having student engagement and student development. So this is the recommended regulation in order to implement the policy that we approved. I guess it was June, sometime a few months ago, we approved the policy. So are there any additional thoughts, concerns, or feedback to the administration on the proposed process, the regulations?
Well, I'm reading it as we're-
Well, if you have any, I mean, again, you know, we don't, the policy has been approved. This is just the process. So if you have any thoughts subsequent to the meeting, if you could just share them with Dr. Boone.
Without having, you know, thoroughly read through it, just skimming it. So I believe it says that students will be chosen from two high schools. Is that right, or just?
No, it would be two semifinalists recommended from the school. So to summarize, Mr. Coleman's coming, he can do a great summary of the process.
Well, I'll just, I'll answer the question. There would be two students from each high school selected as a semifinalist. That would then come to the superintendent, who would then have a committee to review each of those semifinalists to come to a top three from her committee. And then Dr. Boone herself would be able to interview those three finalists and make a recommendation to the board.
I read through it, okay.
And we can reshare the policy because I can't recall if we adopted it.
It was June, it was just before the new board members-
So part of when we went through that process, there was an initial draft, and then we talked about it, and then we tried to make sure that the process was, you know, open and as inclusive as possible to make sure that, you know, students who are really interested and participated had a fair chance and opportunity and pathway to participate. And so this is just the regulation that follows that.
It was adopted on June ten.
June ten, okay. Anything else on that?
I think the process sounds reasonable, and I have to reiterate my excitement about having this and including Dr. Byrne, your students' roundtable. I think our student voices are so valuable, and we underestimate that voice. So excited to have it be part of our discussion.
Just a quick comment. My son was on the Student Advisory Council, graduated in two thousand and eleven. It was a tremendous experience for him. He still raves about it, and it helped in his development of leadership. So I applaud you for bringing that back.
Thank you.
Birdsong?
I just, can I make a comment as well? Yeah, I have a nephew who, ten years ago, served on the, as a student representative for Prince George's County School Board. And that helped him, not only did he contribute, but it helped in developing his leadership for, you know, he serves now as an officer in the Army. And I think that the young people who are privileged to be able to serve on the school board will benefit greatly from that experience. So this is something that's being done around the country, it's been done for many years now. And so I'm so glad to see that this is coming to fruition here.
Yeah, and I think it'll benefit us. I mean, it's amazing, I know you all here, you know, will do something, and then you talk to your child, or you talk to a friend, or you talk to a student, and they'll say, what the heck are you all doing? So I think having that voice at the table also will be, you know, very helpful as we, you know, consider a lot of the policies and the work that we do. So, Dr. Birdsong?
We also had another regulation that was requested to be reviewed again by the school board, and that was JFCDA, Regulation of Student Assault and/or Battery Against Staff. And that policy was actually adopted last school year on April the fifteenth. And so Dr. Lands is also here to support that discussion. Are there questions?
I don't recall where it came from, but-
All right. And so finally, there's a new policy, JHH, Suicide Prevention Prevention. This is, again, a new policy for the school division. And it's my understanding that Dr. Gabriel and Mrs. Basine have worked very closely with Dr. Lands with this policy. So Dr. Lands, if you want to come forward, just to kind of share a brief overview of that?
And let me just mention, because I, as I recalled, we hadn't, we weren't ready for it yet. So I just want to make sure that you all are truly ready for the board to work on this because-
Well, it was our understanding that it was at your request that these were, these two items were, the agenda was changed.
Yeah, Reverend Haywood, I don't know if you recall, but I thought at the last committee meeting that there was still some work that you all were going to do with some of this, is that correct?
When we received the revised agenda plans, those policies were listed.
Let me also then, for the board, offer, if you, again, we don't have to move this tonight, but if you would review it, and then we can have a follow-up discussion based on what's here. And if there are other thoughts, then we can move into another draft of this if necessary.
Ms. Basine?
Oh, I just want to clarify. I believe the last time this came up, I think I had provided comments. But as Dr. Gabriel and I have begun some conversations around our health and wellness policies, we talked about mental health as part of that. And this policy is obviously tied to that. And what we did talk about was that we utilize some of our PBIS Coordination Committee members who are experts in this field, would be probably better suited to review the policy and offer input and advice as to how we can strengthen it. And that we have not done as yet. So just to give you some context about our involvement in that.
I mean, this policy itself, as I understand, is coming from the SBA.
Absolutely.
And, I mean, so I mean, if there's no objection to it, we can proceed with having it ready for the twentieth. And if it, in between now and then, if for some reason we need to pull it off the consent agenda, we can do that. I just wanted to make sure, because I thought there were some additional conversations that you all wanted to have from a staff perspective.
When it was presented, as we were doing our regular policy review, it came up, and then we kind of tabled it so that we could form another committee to look at the policy to strengthen it. And then I was asked to follow up with the SBA to see if it was required for the school division. And upon speaking with the representative, was told that yes, that we needed to move forward with it. And so that's why we, again-
Okay. Well, I would recommend, let's, if it's a required policy, let's get in alignment. And then if there are any modifications or adjustments, we can do that as part of the ongoing work, if that's-
That's what I was trying to remind you of, yeah.
Okay, well, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. And so that includes our policy presentation.
All right. Hugh, anything else from the board on the policy work that's been done? Or any, you know, as part of that process, again, as Ms. Doyle mentioned, you know, we recognize that there are times we have public comment, and then we've also said that there are new policies, that those things can get recommended to the committee, from the superintendent, from the board, from the public, and so forth. So just want to remind you of that, and we will proceed. Ms. Basine, did you have something, or?
I was just going to request a quick break.
All right, so if we can prepare for the next agenda item on the budget, we can take a five-minute break and come back at six o'clock. So, thank you.
What that looks like in relation to Norfolk Public Schools and where we're headed in our budget development. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Thornton.
Thank you, Dr. Boone. Good evening again, school board members. As we all know, the Governor, Governor McAuliffe did release his introduced budget for the new biennium, two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and eighteen. So tonight, I'll just provide the board with a very brief overview of- 2016-2018. So tonight, I'll just provide the board with a very brief overview of some of the highlights of his budget, but in particular, the potential implications for Norfolk Public Schools. We'll start with just what our current year's operating budget is. And the focus of this update is around the operating budget as relates to state revenue. So you know that we've been operating this year with a $314.7 million operating budget. And you know what the major funding sources are, I won't go into that. And you know what the major expenditure categories are. Our current reality, shared with the board back in December, when we tried to give the board a brief preview of the budget as it relates to challenges. Current reality in the current year, we balanced the budget in part by utilizing the one-time revenue strategy. It was important to utilize that. But as we've said to the board over the last several years, it's not a long-term strategy, if you will, and it does not promote structural balance. But the reality is, our needs outweigh our resources. So when we save money in one prior year, then it gives us an opportunity to redirect those funds to support the needs of a subsequent year. But I said to the board that we would begin weaning ourselves off of that. The reality is, we've done that. So we don't have the type of one-time revenue available for next year. And sometimes that's good, because it can force us to make some very tough decisions to balance the budget and to bring it back into a structurally balanced budget where our ongoing needs are supported by ongoing revenue sources. So with that being said, of course, this year's budget, the current year's budget includes $6.7 million in one-time local funding through reappropriation of prior-year savings in our fund balance, as well as some additional CTI funds or construction technology and infrastructure funds that the city provided for this year, for a total use of $6.7 million in one-time revenue in the current year's budget. And as we begin to build our base budget for next year, we know that that one-time revenue comes off the top, as it's not, at this point in time, available for next year. Of course, Governor McAuliffe, he released his 2016-18 biennial budget to the money committees of the Senate and the House of Delegates on December 17th. The next biennium being 2016-18 begins July, this July now, July 1, 2016, the first year running through June 30, 2017. And then the second year of the current, of the new biennium will begin July 1, 2017, and end June 30, 2018. Key recommendations impacting the public education. Of course, the new biennium marks the requirement for re-benchmarking of the status of quality, which serves as that minimal funding for schools. And the governor's budget does take into account the requirement to re-benchant. And that's reflected in updates to direct aid programs, again, SOQ incentive, categorical, and lottery-funded programs. The governor's budget also makes estimates regarding new sales tax revenue for the next biennium. It also includes, as we do every, by law, again, every two years, the new biennium, we, the composite index for localities and school divisions is recalculated. And, you know, that is what the state uses to determine a locality's ability to fund their local education program from the standpoint of its funding capacity. And they factor in the adjusted gross income of a community, the relative real property values of a community, as well as the sales in a community. And that's all relative to our sister school divisions or localities across the Commonwealth. So for Norfolk Public Schools, you'll see later, our composite index for this next biennial budget actually went down, indicating that relative to our school communities around the Commonwealth, our ability to fund our local education program, our ability has diminished since the last time the composite index was calculated statewide. And you'll see what our trend has been over the last four years later. It also, the governor's budget also factors in the need to increase contribution rates towards the Virginia Retirement System. It does not change the program, but it does require that to continue to fund the program based on some strategies and goals that the Virginia Retirement System and the actuary studies have put in place. And what the previous governor put in place in terms of trying to get the funded status of the program or the statewide retirement system up, it will require a nominal increase that the governor's proposing for the next year of this new biennium. And then it also includes, as a new item, the governor's proposal includes funding for additional school-based instructional positions, those positions beyond what we currently are funding as a school division and across the Commonwealth. And you may ask, school-based instructional, that would be, of course, classroom teachers, teacher aides, principals, assistant principals, media specialists, guidance counselors. So really, the language, as we understand it right now, supporting this initiative from the governor gives the flexibility to the school divisions to determine what their needs are and how they can best utilize these funds. You may ask the question, well, how much does that give us? It gives us approximately $1.3 million in additional funds. And it does not require a local match at this point in time, which is good for us as well. We'll have to make a decision, how do we think we can best utilize those funds as we go through our assessment throughout the budget process that will be presented to the board in February. Now, the highlight here, of course, I think we all know by now that in the governor's proposal, it does not include additional funding for teacher salaries or additional salary increases for next year. The governor does propose in year two of the biennium, which goes into effect July 1, 2017, which is year after next, some funding to support teacher salaries. But the current, for year one of the biennium, based on the governor's introduced budget, it does not provide any funding to support salary increases for any K-12 staff at this point in time. The bottom line for us, when you factor in the individual accounts within status of quality, incentive, and categorical, and lottery, when you compare our state funding for the current year with what is proposed under the governor's introduced budget, we would expect to see an increase in state funding of approximately $6.7 million, which is just under a 4% increase, which is positive. The fact that we would receive approximately $6.7 million under the governor's proposal. And it's important to remind everyone that it is the governor's introduced budget. And of course, the House and the Senate will develop their budget versions, which will serve as amendments to the governor's proposal. And ultimately, the General Assembly, through their negotiation process, will have to reach consenses on what will become a General Assembly budget. Of course, this is a long session. The idea is that when the session adjourns in mid-March, I think it is, or late February, I get it.
Mid-March.
Mid-March. Then we'll have a General Assembly budget, and hopefully, it won't carry on throughout the spring. But we know that can happen. But hopefully, that won't happen, because it kind of just slows down the process for the localities in moving forward with action that's needed. But again, it's very positive, the fact that we, in the governor's budget, we would expect to receive, again, approximately $6.7 million in additional state funding compared to this year. It does not make up for the significant reductions that have taken place over the last several years following the Great Recession, but it is headed in the right direction in providing additional funds for school divisions, particularly as Norfolk Public Schools. And of course, you know that the funding is influenced by many variables, of which student enrollment projections, local composite index. I shared, mentioned that to you earlier, that our composite index is actually going down. It also reflects the re-benchmarking process, or recalculating the estimated cost of funding the SOQs. And then, of course, the other variable that oftentimes impacts state funding is the change in VRS contribution rates. And as we've shared with you in a similar presentation each of the last three years, this is our recent enrollment trend, based on what we know today. We're still in the process through Dr. Billy's office and Mr. Fuddy, our resident enrollment projection expert, was still calculating the enrollment projections. But we feel at this point in time, based on recent history, in the aggregate, we can plan for another approximately 1% decline in enrollment. And that's based on the average of the last three to four years. We've seen a somewhat reduction in the rate of enrollment decline over the last couple of years. But we also have to look on a conservative standpoint, this early in the budget process, assuming that we would see about a 1% decline, which is approximately 300 kids, based on what our current enrollment is, K-12 enrollment, that is, the SOQs fund K-12. So the baseline for our planning purposes right now, for a projected March 31, 2017 average daily membership, for state revenue projection purposes, will be 29,200 kids, which represents approximately 300 fewer than what we're projecting for the current year's March 31, 2016 average daily membership. Of course, you've seen this before. Those 300 kids equate to, or the reduction, projected reduction in approximately 300 kids as relates to our March ADM, equates to about $1.5 million. So if we were not experiencing this 1% projected decline, then we could reasonably say that instead of $6.7 million, we could have approximately $8.2 million. But that's not our reality. We're not alone in that many of our rural and urban communities around the Commonwealth, and even the country for that matter, continue to experience enrollment decline. And here is our recent trend in composite index that I shared with you earlier. You can see that going back as far as 2008, 2010, and this was based on, just prior to the recession, Great Recession, it was .25. But then as, it almost seems counterintuitive, but as we went into recession, we began to see our composite index increase. And that is because Northern Virginia's composite index declined at a much greater rate. So because Northern Virginia is such a large portion of the Commonwealth, particularly as it relates to Fairfax, Loudoun, and Prince William, where they were doing the recession, following the recession, they were seeing their composite index going down. But communities like Norfolk and some of the rural communities around the Commonwealth, that inverse relationship saw ours going up. But now that the economy is turning around, albeit at a much slower incremental rate, our composite index for next biennium is going down. On the one hand, it says that we can't afford to the degree that we have been able in the past. But at the same time, it gives us more money relative to our share as relates to other communities. And for us, because the composite index is going up, I'm sorry, going down, the inverse relationship is that we're entitled to a greater share of state funding. So we would see approximately a $2.5 million increase. If our composite index stayed the same, then that $6.7 would be $4.2, conceptually. So the combination of our enrollment going down, approximately projected at 300, we lose 1.5. But at the same time, our composite index going down, we gain 2.5 million. So it's all relative, the composite index is all relative to what's going on around the Commonwealth. And of course, we just focused on state revenue. But it's always important to remind us, as we continue to go through the budget process, some of the expenditure considerations, one of which, of course, is compensation. Just, again, to put in context for you, the cost of a 1% salary increase with fully loaded benefits is approximately $2.5 million. So as you know, for the past couple of years, we've done a 2% across the board. So that's cost approximately $5 million, $5 million. The cost of the VRS rate increase, it's going up about .6%, which is just over a half a percent for next year. Based on what we know right now, our salary base, that would equate to about a $1 million cost increase for us. So where we're getting additional state money, we're also going to incur, of course, some additional expenditures, one of which would be VRS, which is mandated. We don't have an option there. Of course, salaries are always at our discretion, but we have to remain competitive with what our surrounding school divisions are going to do, if we, even if we can do even more than what they're going to do. The other expenditure consideration that you've heard, of course, is the additional state-funded instructional positions. The state has given us $1.3 million, but at the same time, we have to add that to the expenditure side of the budget. And then we've already talked about over the last few years, and this year, the need in this current year, we began the process of beginning to rebuild our instructional technology resource teacher pool that was cut several years ago. And that is a state mandated requirement. So we have to begin to build that pool back up in a more earnest way, beginning in this coming fiscal year, this new fiscal year. And to fund, to meet the SOQ requirement, we have to have one per 1,000 students. So we need a total of approximately 30. We have 10. So we would need 20 more at approximately $65,000 a piece, I'm sorry, $75,000 a piece, and that would be $1.5 million. And we would consider that at this point a mandated expenditure requirement. And then, of course, health insurance is always driven by the market for the most part. So we'll be working with the city, as we're all in the same consortium, to determine as we get moved forward in the budget process, what our planning number will be. It's likely, market-driven, that we'll see another increase. This year, we budgeted for 7% increase. It's not unlikely that we won't see a similar-type increase that is truly market-driven and based on our utilization. And then finally, there are always other operational needs to be determined. So when we factor in the fact that we began the year, this budget process with a $6.7 million revenue gap, and you balance that against the projected $6.7 million increased state funding, we begin with a balanced budget. But when we factor in some of these expenditure considerations, then that's when we begin to look at funding needs exceeding our available resources. So we will have to make some tough choices, as well as make the decision as to what will be the request of the city council in terms of funding, what will eventually become the school board's approved budget, following the proposed and the recommendation by Dr. Boone as superintendent. And then what's next? Of course, we'll begin in earnest the process of reviewing and analyzing budget requests. That's already underway. And we'll begin that in a more significant way in the days and weeks leading up to the presentation of the proposed budget. We'll establish the budget baseline. We'll finalize revenue, the revenue budget. And when I say finalize, we'll look at the final enrollment projections from Mr. Fuddy. I don't anticipate any significant change in those projections at this point in time, but we will factor that in as he finalizes those enrollment projections by school and grade within the individual schools. And then we'll finalize the expenditure budget during the month of February. And the superintendent's proposed budget is scheduled for presentation to the school board on February 17.
So as we open this up for commenting questions, just want to reiterate something that Ms. Doyle is good at reminding me of, that we really talked about the process for the board's conversation around goals and strategies and objectives. And Dr. Boone, you mentioned earlier in terms of thoughts that you have had already in terms of impact on the budget. We don't have anything on that last chart that reflects that time. So I just want to put out there for the board's thought, as you have any additional comments and questions. We know that this time of year has historically always been even more grind when we start dealing with the budget. So I know that Dr. Gabriel's going to be meeting with the team tomorrow on the agenda planning, but both in terms of the possibility of either a call meeting, or that February 3 work session being devoted to that discussion, similar to as we did today. So I don't know what other things may be coming up from administrative side or from the board's side. But we do, we did commit to having those conversations, and we're behind. And so we do have to find ways of making sure that we are hearing from the board, from goals, both from where we were last year and where we are now, and also in terms of what Dr. Boone is going to bring to the table from the work that she's been doing with the cabinet and the team. So I just want to open that up, and Ms. Doyle, I'll...
Yeah, so if I could kind of reemphasize and reinforce what you commented on earlier, I think we should do it sooner than later. I think February 3 is too late for then the administration to go back and calculate what we would desire to have in this next year's budget. So if you could tomorrow at Agenda Planning, look at another date that we can agree upon. Because I think that there are things, you know, we've been asked by city council for several years, tell us what you need, tell us what you need. And then we come in with a budget, and we don't tell them what we need. Above and below... a budget, and we don't tell them what we need, above and beyond what we think is acceptable for them to hear. And I think we have to answer that question honestly. So if we need, and I'm making it up, if we need ten million dollars more to add X amount of more teachers to the school, to bring up teacher salaries, above and beyond Virginia Beach and Chesapeake, so that we do not lose teachers and we bring them up to par, and that's going to be a ten million dollar nut, then let's say that's ten million dollars we need more and above and beyond that we have ever asked for. But we're going to have to sustain, sustain that, so that's not just a one-time ask. But they continue to ask us that question, and I want to be able to answer that with a real answer, which we know, again, teacher salary is one of them. So this year, the fact that the governor's budget right now doesn't have in it a teacher salary in it for, you know, year one, we're going to have to clearly put in a salary increase for this, this year, no question. But do we want it just to be a two percent? Why don't we say, let's be bold and make it five, seven, eight percent, and then let's supersede what Virginia Beach and Chesapeake are doing? Let's keep these teachers here. And I don't want to make people twitch in the room, but I'm just using that as an example.
You're not making me twitch? I just think...
I'm using, I'm just using that as a metaphor, because I think that's a good one to use, because we're talking about our teachers not being on par with Virginia Beach and Chesapeake. We're lower on our average salary than the state, and if we want to retain and recruit highly qualified through either a policy or otherwise, then we need to tell people what it's going to cost to do it, and we can't hide that cost and pretend that we can do it without the funding. So that's just one thing I think we need to talk about, and that's just one small example of what we need to talk about, and I think February third then puts you up against the wall, frankly, Dr. Thornton and Dr. Boone, and coming back on the seventeenth with a proposed budget. Another thing is, I know, for instance, Dr. Boone, you want to do a zero-based, which I think is a great idea. I think we also need to look at, we've talked about zero-based, I just...
Right, I did. Unfortunately, the timing of my arrival in this, we will certainly be applying in some of that thought to things that make it into the budget.
Okay.
But next year, we'll definitely be a lot deeper into that process.
Okay. And then I also think we need to look at multi-year budgeting, not just one year, next year, next year. I mean, the fact is, you have Academy for Discovery at Lakewood, who started the year zero, one, two, three, four. We have open campus, we have campus Stella and bowling, we have the ITRTs, for instance, that we want to build over the years. So the idea is, let's not look at this at one, at one year's snapshot, what is the growth potential? And Dr. Boone, you hit on a point that I've been trying to, to, to speak to also is, so we do need to grow the specialty program at Granby in the IB world, because if we're going to be able to catch all the students coming out of the IB middle schools, we don't have enough seats if it's just sixty-five. So we need to expand that, and that's just one specialty program. And as, you know, Larchmont does their pre-science or their, you know, whatever their focus is going to be that'll lead up to pre-med, potentially up to the med science at, at Maury, again, same with Norview. So I think we need to look at, as Tondi, you mentioned the, looking at the specialty programs and the evaluation of it and the growth of it, and then also gifted. You know, we've talked about wanting to expand the gifted program. We have forty-four gifted teachers in the budget right now, is that really enough? I'd say no. I say we think we need more. And then we need to look at the model of additional teachers, and can we do more that's in classroom versus pulling out, especially we have schools that have higher identified, higher volume of identified gifted students. So those are just some examples that reinforce my interest in meeting sooner than later so that the administration can say, okay, this is what it's going to cost, and whether we get the money or not is one thing, but at least we've answered the question, and we've done our due diligence of what we know it would be if we wanted to pursue these efforts.
Dr. Robinson?
I agree, and I think we need to do that with, not in a vacuum, but with data.
True.
And I would like to see the salary scales for the seven city schools, Harfick, Virginia Beach, Chesapeake, Suffolk, the region, so we can actually get a comparison. We had it a few years ago, and we were pretty close in a lot of categories, and some categories were actually higher. So I'd, but I'd like to see where we're at right now, and I'd also like to see, just to review how much of the salaries have increased over the last four years. We've given a salary increase every year for the last four years. Hasn't been great, but it's been better than nothing. And again, and you go back to the private sector just climbing out of the recession, there's a lot of, lot of private sector organizations that have not provided those kind of increases. So I, you know, I just want to have it in comparison, please.
Ms. Wagner?
Just to reflect on his statement about salary increases, a lot of years when you've done that, the insurances went up, and so we think...
We covered that, too.
No, because there, when the salaries increased and the insurances came up, I was in the system and I got thirty dollars less than I had...
That was because of social security.
Nope, it was because of insurance.
We're going to have that discussion.
Insurance. So I mean, but that, that has, and we need to look at that, because they have increased, but then with the insurances, it, it was not really an increase in the salaries. I see a head back there nodding.
Ms. Bassin?
I wholeheartedly second what Ms. Doyle has said and Ms. Wagner and, and Dr. Robinson in terms of, you know, when, will there be a program analysis where we can actually look at specific line items and programs and practices and how, and whether or not they're working? One example would be the math and reading specialists. We've been funding that, those positions, and are we really seeing gains in reading and math as a direct result of having those positions in place? That's just an example, I'm not asking for a response at the moment, but that's the kind of data that I think we need to have as we enter into these budget discussions. And also evaluation of programs, are we, you know, not just saying that we need more gifted teachers, for instance, but really, what impact does that have, or should we be training, providing greater professional development for our classroom teachers to differentiate and provide those accelerated opportunities within the classroom? Those are all conversations that I think we need to have and have the data to do that. Going back to the multi-year allocation of dollars, we did that, well, we, meaning I was being on the strategic planning team, prior to being on the board, I know that the previous board and administration provided a five-year outlook aligned to the strategic plan. Is that a document that we will use going forward? We have the strategic plan, obviously, that's been approved, and we are, I think, year three of that strategic plan. How will we, how will the budget be organized in alignment with that strategic plan is a question? You don't have to answer that right now, but that's just, you know, what's that?
Nothing, go ahead.
Okay. Those are just things that I want us to not have, you know, those are efforts that are already in place, and I think we need to follow and sustain that practice of having the multi-year allocation of dollars so that we know where we need to go going forward. And as Ms. Doyle said, city council has been asking, they even said it again this year, starting at the big, at the onset of the school year. And I think we need to get that joint meeting, you know, at first we need to know what we need, but, and then get that, that conversation going.
Dr. Gabriel?
So I can't remember if it came out of the master milestones or if it evolved with the master milestones, but there were several documents that were put together. It was, I think it was a three or five-year budget plans, and one of the documents was pre-K education, because we wanted to grow pre-K. We wanted to, number one, sustain the slots that we already had, and then, number two, how are we going to grow pre-K for the four-year-olds? So we had a pre-K plan, and we also had a professional development plan, where they talked about the cohorts that they were going to be sending to George Mason and William and Mary and the gifted teachers, and how much that would cost for professional development. And then we had a technology budget that was, I think, five years, that they kind of projected things out. When we were trying to go and tell folks, what do we need, what are the projections that we need? So let's not forget about those documents that we have. And we do talk about program analysis and how we can hone the specialty programs that we have, build upon the specialty programs that we have, and are we delivering the resource, are we delivering what we are saying that we are doing? And are we preparing budgets, just like Academy of Discovery and what will be Camp Estella for new things that are going to be coming up year after year? So I think all of that has to be taken into great consideration, and I have no problem asking for stars, none whatsoever. If that's what our kids need in order to make the benchmarks, then that's what we need to ask for, and whether or not we get it, you know, that'll be a different question, but we, definitely, it's our role as the board in order to advocate for them and to tell them exactly what we need. Second question, Dr. Thornton, I may have asked you this beforehand, but when we talk about the Title I budget, I know that some years we get certain monies and some years, some years the, the monies are different, and we're able to fund certain positions. It's in that, it's in the budget book that you said clarifies what positions are supported by title funds versus those that are supported by the state or the local government.
Yes.
Okay.
In the grants section.
In the grants section, okay. All right, thank you.
So two things, one, a, just a technical question, the February seventeenth proposed superintendent's, superintendent's proposed budget, remind me again, the, the actual date that we have to receive that?
We have to have a school board approved budget to the city council by April the first, to the city manager.
Okay.
April the first.
So there is some potential...
We're not locked in stone when we present it.
Right.
The board just has to have one adopt it or approved and transmit it to the city manager for inclusion in his budget presentation by April one.
Is that, is that proposed date based upon preliminary conversations that you've had?
No, it's just based on what our previous calendar...
Okay, so maybe some flexibility in there.
Yeah, it could easily be pushed out to March, early March.
March third.
And some school divisions do that.
March third.
Yeah, they'll push it to March.
And then the, just a...
Not a bad idea.
Yeah, then just a general thought, I, I, I don't think we have given city council all that we've asked, but I think we have, you may, I know since I've come on the board, I remember there was a lot of consternation about the fact that we were asking the superintendent or the board was submitting to the council a, a budget that wasn't balanced.
Right.
And we went through a lot of spreadsheets and charts, and so I, I know the last two years, we've submitted proposed budgets that were, depending on how you look at, the negative side or the plus side. So I do know we have done much of that, it may not have been all that we've, that we've talked about, and I'm in support of really asking for what we, what we need. I think we just have to be, I think as Ms. Doyle said earlier, and Ms. Bassin, make sure that we can quantify it and qualify it over a snapshot of time, because it's one thing to say this is what we think we need for the next five years when it may or may not be, but really trying to make sure what is it that we at least need over a one, two-year period to drive the, the goals, the master milestones, the recommendations coming from the superintendent and so forth. So we definitely need to have that conversation, and, and we will.
What's been the impact of our most recent ask, which was the nearly five mil, more than five million dollars for the reading and math specialist?
That's correct.
That we equally distributed back to the equity versus the...
That's correct, yeah. So I think that's part of it, and that's what I'm hearing in the conversation around the evaluations, but I do think that we have to be able to show what we've done with what we've gotten the last couple of times, and then use that as a basis and foundation for what we add on to in the, in this future conversation.
Reverend Haywood?
That is exactly what the council said to us when we went to joint meeting between us and the council, they said, ask what you need, but demonstrate that what we have given you in the past has caused positive trends.
Ms. Doyle?
Well, and I think when it comes, sorry?
I thought you were going to...
Yeah, and I think when it comes to, for instance, teacher salaries, you know, I think Ms. Wagner makes a good point, but we don't necessarily have an historical trend to say we, two percent, two percent, two percent, two percent. What we want to say is how do we get ahead of the game also, so that we retain and attract highly qualified teachers that aren't plucked to go to another division nearby for the sake of money.
Well, what we suggested to the council is that the teacher salaries here in Norfolk need to be comparable, if not above the salaries of the other districts.
Right. So what we'd be showing them is a projection of we could be able to pay our teachers X, Y, and Z, so it may not be an historic, but it could be forward-thinking. And, you know, we have hard data that could show that, and...
I agree, I think it ties right back to the equity discussion that we had, so...
Right.
And, and I would also add the, the need for a pay and comp study.
Yes.
Because it's one thing to just build upon somebody else's numbers, and it's, it's another to really create a true picture of what the market is looking like, and so that's something we will need to talk about, you know, something that I, I have on my parking lot for this year's budget is, do I put money in for a pay and comp study for next year with the goal of, of making sure that then we have some, some projections and how we would, if we have to phase in those results.
Yes.
Then that gives us that multi-year approach of what, what some commitments may be and all of that, but yeah, I've been giving a lot of thought to the whole piece of a pay and comp study based on what I'm seeing in the district.
Well, and if I could add, when I met with Dr. Boone on our one-on-one, that was one of the things we talked about, was the need for that, it was in my notes, so that would be one of those things that we would talk about at our next meeting, because there's clearly a need for that, is looking at the full picture, so I wholly support that, and the sooner we can do that, the better, because we do need to look at that step-stair compensation package as a whole, because it's really kind of out of whack, and we all know that, so we need to fix it.
All right, anything else?
And policies around it.
Exactly, yes.
Anything else for this for now? So just in, in closing this piece out, one, as I said, we can look at potential dates if we determine it's the will of the board to do something before February third, also with the potential for pushing back the, the proposed budget on the seventeenth, then at least we have that as a fallback that's already in our schedule. And so if you all could just look at that and determine what makes sense, that would be helpful, and just let us know, because, you know, our schedules are already crazy enough so we can try to make sure we have, you know, full, full attendance. Anything else, Dr. Thornton?
No, sir, if, you know, to the point of the presentation date, the sooner that decision can be made, the better for, for staff in terms of planning what we...
We'll talk about it tomorrow. I'm almost thinking, because the first meeting in February is not a business meeting.
Work session.
It's purely work session, it gives us the opportunity not to be constrained by having to come to the seven o'clock meeting and doing business, and it almost makes sense to, to address it in that meeting, and, you know, continue to think about and address it, and that still gives us then the timing to report back and get something to you by March third, which is, puts us in the timeline again for another discussion, and before final action that we have to take to present it to, to the city by April first.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you all, thank you.
Last couple of things, one, there is the recognition ceremony coming up on the twenty-seventh of January, as we've, I think that's, that's correct. And we've also have outstanding invitation, I shared before, to city council to see if that might be an opportunity for us to just have a joint meeting, you know, we haven't had one in a while, but we're just waiting to hear some feedback on, on getting that scheduled. What was the other piece? Oh, and before we leave, I know that Brian McIntyre is going to come up, so I just wanted him to update the board on the technology, where we are in terms of the broadcasting technology here, they have been working on it, it's, we've been using it today, but I just wanted him to give an, an update on where we are with that, since the, the board did support that, that effort that allows us to begin streaming our business meetings in addition to what we've been doing with the work session. And then while that occurs, I just wanted to, again, offer the apology for not getting all the policy and other pieces up on board docs ahead of time for you. One of the things that, that I want us to talk about is, you know, we have this requirement that says that as we, as you receive your packet, so to speak, then we also have to have a packet available to the public as well. then we also have to have a packet available to the public as well. And so, whether or not that's a, a board book, that we make sure that we do that, or as we look at the use of board docs and the approval process that allows for staff to upload things to board docs as they're available, we just have to get that timing straight so that, you know, we can continue to, to make that happen and get the things for you in a timely fashion so you can be prepared for the meeting. So, we will continue to improve upon that, and I thank you for your support and your recommendations where that's concerned. So, I don't know if Brian's going to make it, otherwise, we're going to adjourn, but I did mention to him, and so I'm sure, I know he's listening, because he monitors, monitors our meetings, so...
I will say, though, I'm very appreciative of the division's work in making this happen, both in this room and in our other conference room. It's going to make a huge difference for us to be able to continue to connect to the community and for them to be able to see our work, both in the work sessions and the board. So, thank you to the division for making this happen.
Yeah, and that's what I wanted him to mention, because a lot that, I know, one day I was taping NPS Now, and he was showing me the boards and what they were pulling out and what they were putting in, and it's a lot that's going on in that background. He's done? All right, Madam Kirk said we can adjourn. So, Dr. Boone, any final remarks?
Well, no, I was going to say that the representatives from Viacom were actually here to, to see our first live stream and to help give us some tips and suggestions about what we're doing. And so, we've learned some things today about the mics, and they, even though it doesn't feel like a button, it really is a button. If you push it and hold, it goes off and it comes back on. And the way in which we, we, our distance with the mics. So, we'll get Brian to come back and, and talk about it a little bit more. But we were pleased that Viacom was here today to support our first live stream. And pleased that, as we heard when you clicked on it, it really does work.
Anything else from any other board members? Otherwise, we will see you in Charlottesville. All right, we can adjourn.